Try to get her there. There we go.
That helps.
Hi, Matt. Hi, Sophie. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark.
Let us know when we're live. We have one more minute. Or not. Are we live now?
We are, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for June 15, 2021. The meeting this evening is being run on a Zoom webinar format as we have in the recent past. The link for that Zoom is on the agenda, which can be found on the town's website. On the Select Board June 15th meeting tab on the front page. You are welcome to join as a attendee. And if you have any questions during the meeting, you can raise your hand and we will try to get you promoted to a participant to comment. Alternatively, also, there are also data on the agenda that gives you, those of you who don't have computer access, to be able to call in and identify yourself and to raise your hand in a different manner. So with that, and before we start the agenda, there's a couple of announcements to make. First and foremost is we want to welcome our two new Select Board members to their first full Select Board Meeting in the forms of Sophie Romanoff and Mr. Matt Siegel. Welcome aboard. Enjoy the ride. The second item is I need to make an agenda modification. Fundamentally, to table the approval of the wastewater and snowball budgets. The reason is that is, compared to my understanding, that there were some changes made to the budgets and they did not get into the packet in time, the packet that you've reviewed. So for two reasons, I think we would be wise, so I'd recommend to the board to table these two approvals to June, yeah, to July 6th meeting, which would be our next full meeting after the Fourth of July weekend. And at that time has an advantage because we would also be able to have the end of year actual performance of both those entities from June 30th, of course, our fiscal year, available for that meeting at the same time. So if I don't have any objections from them, go ahead, Mark.
I was gonna say, do you want a motion for it?
Sure. That'd be a good idea.
I'll make a motion that we table the wastewater budget and the snowball budget until our Select Board meeting on July 6th.
Second, second motion made in the second. Any discussion? Not here. Roll call, vote. Matt?
Aye.
Sophie?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bye bye. Five zero. Thank you very much for that flexibility. With that, we will then head into our agenda. The first item is public input on non-agenda items. I don't think we have any raised hands, Allison. I don't know of any requests for that input. So with that, we will move on to item number two, which is the, I do do every, just time every year, which is to establish the rules of order, general rules of order for Select Board meetings, what you have in your packet. Does anybody have any comments on those rules of order or any questions on those rules of order? Not hearing any. I would ask for a motion to adopt those for this fiscal year.
Hold on, I'm having trouble.
What's that, Allison?
I'm having a little trouble finding them.
I didn't see anything in the packet.
One second.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't see them either.
Well, yeah, you're right. I don't either.
Yeah, I, I think that there was an issue and they were left out of the packet. So I'm trying to find them and maybe, would it be helpful if I screen shared them?
I think.
Go ahead, Allison.
I tend to think that maybe it makes sense for this to be a little bit more of a conversation after everyone's had a chance to look at them. And then maybe when we're doing our Select Board Goals Workshop, we could talk about that. Because in the past, what's happened is we just kind of approved the, the rules of order just because it was, you know, that's the way it had always been done. And then after thinking about it, things came up and we realized we actually wanted to change something. So especially since we have a couple of new members, it might be good just to talk about the history of some of the, you know, everything from what time we have the meeting to, you know, just the format for committees and things like that. So I would suggest we table this until we can.
Yeah, no problem. They're very similar, identical to wastewater commissioners one, but I would agree with Allison, what she said. So could I again have a motion to move that to our, yet to be determined, the rules of order, to move to the priority workshop, which will be scheduled at the end of this meeting.
I will make a motion, so stated.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call, vote. Matt? Yes? Sophie?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
And bye bye. Five zero. Thank you. Next, item three, the agenda's approval of board minutes from April 20, 2021. In June 1, 2021, of course, this will be limited to discussions with just the three of us who were in attendance to that meeting, since Sophie and Matt weren't. Are there any comments on those two meeting minute drafts, changes or motion?
I can, I'm fine with the. Let me get them here. So it goes, for the meeting, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2021. I did not see any changes.
Second.
Second, and thank you for that very good job. Did you do that by yourself, Bob?
I'm not gonna admit to anything, but yes. Yeah, I have some hidden skills, I guess.
You're hired.
Thank you. So with that, we have a roll call, vote. Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And bye bye. Three zero. Thank you. Then the second one, June 1st, Marco?
On Minister Junior and number 6A, there's a paragraph, we were approving GIS layers, funding for GIS layers. And there was a paragraph that doesn't quite make sense to me. Audra and I discussed it. It appears that it's about, maybe a motion was reapproved. Right now, it reads, Ratner motion to approve the use of contingency funds up to $15,000 for additional GIS layers. Lookner seconded beyond $15,000 input from the Select Board. And that's what does make sense. Rephrase motion for GIS services. Ratner motion to approve the use of contingency funds of up to $15,000 to begin the process of upgrading our GIS system. Roll call five ayes, motion pass five zero zero. I believe, what Audra and I believe is that we changed the nature of the motion. We rephrased it.
Or amended, amended the motion.
And the motion, right. So the, the beyond $15,000 input from the Select Board doesn't make a lot of sense. But if we can approve it noting that it's about rephrasing the motion, or what'd you say, Audra?
Amending the motion.
Amending the motion. If we can just put that in there, then I'll motion to approve the minutes with that, that change.
Allison? I also have a, just one other addition that I wanted to make. But I, I agree with your comments, Mark. For the watershed school update, the, what's there is fine, but if we could also add just a specific mention that in addition to the climate change class, there are also two students who presented their senior projects. Caleb presented on the, his designs for the Montgomery Dam removal and Alden on the community art projects. And I, I'd just like it to specifically reference that so people could go back and know that it happened.
Okay, so we have two specific changes when Mark made and one that Allison made. But those two changes, we have a motion to accept.
So.
So second, Mark?
Second, second.
Motion made in second, no discussion, I presume. And with that, roll call, vote. Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bye bye. Three zero. Thank you very much. Onto item four, which is our consent agenda. This evening, we have three items on the consent agenda. And they are, first, request to approve the Bittler's license for Blackberry and Camden Island, High Tide Inn, Quarry Hill and Timber Cliff Cottage Inn. Second item is request to approve the following lodging establishment license renewals. They are Blackberry Inn tied in, and I believe they should be High Tide Inn, that is High Tide Inn, and Timber Cliff Cottage Inn. And the third item is request from the Camden Rotary for approval to close closure of Atlantic Avenue on July 4th. And that would be from about 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM, as they do annually for the music by the sea concert with a rain date for July 5th. Are there any objections to the items in the consent agenda?
Bob, can I ask about, in terms of point of information rather than an objection, the time as opposed to coming out of consent?
Sure.
Just a quick point of information, Quarry Hill said they don't need to renew. Just, I was curious about that.
But I can, I can speak to that. Audra and I had a discussion about that before the meeting. It appears that they no longer need a state license. And that's what the notification is by, normally, we would have that as part of our package. But they don't need that anymore, but they still need a town license. And so that's, that's the clarification. I almost brought, I almost brought it up, Matt, but I was testing you and you passed.
And I do have one, one small mark, one, also a point of clarification for item 4C, Bob. Camden Rotary, does that need police and fire sign off?
No.
Any kind?
No, Audrey, correct. That doesn't even require, no, it's just a formal, just that they have to be aware it's gonna be closed and they are.
Excellent.
Okay, so if those, if there are no other objections or no objections to those three items, they are those items that's hereby adopted. Item five, public hearing, we have one public hearing tonight for the license, liquor license application for the Camden Island. Before I get into the description of it, normally in a public hearing setting, I would read the, and describe the public hearings, the purpose of the Select Board to solicit public opinion from individuals interested in the matter at hand, and then go through various directions for the public. And then when that piece is over, we would close the public hearing and revert to the Select Board deliberation. And I don't believe we have any comment that I'm aware of, many individual on the, on the Zoom call tonight. So I will just move to close the public hearing portion and revert to a decision by the Select Board for a liquor license for Jeff Chen doing business as Camden Island at 87 Elm Street for the renewal Class 11 restaurant slash liquor lounge liquor license. Do I have any comments or motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Jeff Chen, DBA Camden Island at 87 Elm Street for a renewal Class 6 restaurant lounge liquor license.
Class 11. Okay, second?
11, sorry about that.
Okay, throw me numerals.
I'm a little. They're a little.
Second for the motion, please. I'll second the motion. Matt, thank you, Matt, and discussion. With that, I'll go for roll call, vote. Allison?
Aye.
Sophie?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bye bye. Five zero. At this point, we have a number of items to, as wastewater commissioners, so I need a motion to leave the Select Board Meeting and convene as wastewater commissioners.
I move that we adjourn the Select Board Meeting and reconvene as wastewater commissioners.
Second?
Second.
All right. Motion made in second. Roll call, vote. Matt?
Aye.
Sophie?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, hi. I, I believe Matt and Sophie, you were aware that as Select Board members, we are also commissioners of our wastewater department. And just to, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. But the first item on our, as wastewater commissioners, we are to approve or to cock the rules of order to be followed as at wastewater permission or meetings. Given Allison's prior comment, and they, they happen to be identical with Select Board, perhaps we should look at the rules of order at our priorities meeting and then just change the word to wastewater commissioners all at the same time. Anybody have any objections to that, Select Board? Not seeing any ayes. We'll move on to item two, which is the appointment of the Chief Executive, Executive and Administrative Official of the Wastewater Department and of the Superintendent of the Wastewater Department, first to Article 5, Section 7 of the Town Charter. Audrey can tell us all those two individuals are.
So I am the Chief Executive Officer and David Bolstridge is the Wastewater Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Any questions, anybody? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Audra Kahler as the Chief Executive and Administrative Office of the Wastewater Department and of Dave Bolstridge as the Superintendent of the Wastewater Department, pursuant to Article 5, Section 7 of the Town Charter.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Matt?
Aye.
Sophie?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, five zero. Thank you very much. And we have the smiling face of Mr. Bolstridge brought in at this point in time. Did you have a comment, Sophie?
No, I just, from a procedural, procedural point, I, I asked Janice if we needed to sign those appointments and how soon we needed to sign them. Because I, I believe that if we were in person, we would actually sign them in the meeting, correct?
Right after. Usually, we would have, if we were live, we would normally have an envelope or a folder, excuse me, of all items approved, including licenses and all those kinds of things, and we would be signing them at the conclusion of the meeting. We, obviously, in the last year, we haven't been able to affect a lot of that. And we've had to go to Plan B, which has been a little different in terms of amount of signatures we're required to get it done. As we go live again someday, we will be going back to that procedure.
But, and so I asked Janice, so I'm picking up a, a package of information on Friday and I offered to sign all those appointments by Friday. And I just wanted to make sure that we had a deadline for this to make, to, to comply with signing. And I really don't know if there's any issue if we don't sign today or in the next 24 hours or if, I just don't.
No, there's no issue, Sophie. We have some flexibility in that regard to charter. As I recall, most every one of these just says that the Select Board will approve these individuals annually. And that doesn't specify a date. Maybe it should, but it doesn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. But you can't have it all available for you, Sophie, so that you won't make a separate trip in?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I asked Janice to do, to have everything available Friday, so I can.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Now, third item, Dave would love to talk about is the update on our wastewater treatment plant redevelopment and of the facility, as well as the replacement of the C Street Force Main. I don't know, where are you gonna begin, Dave?
Well, we'll start at the beginning here. Things are going real well with the, the upgrade. It started a little bit slow because of the logistics as far as removing the old sledge storage tank. But once that was done, now we're pretty well running on all the pistons and doing well. The, right now, the groundwork for the new sledge and laboratory building, sledge press building is ready and that, so we'll be pouring cement in that area. We also have the headworks building is about ready to pour the floor, which was a, actually ahead of time because, you know, we, we went over there after the, we had to slow down with the, with the storage tank. Also, we're also putting walls up in the, ah, there we go. Thank you, Audrey.
You're welcome. I'll switch slides for you, too.
All right. And so you can go to the next one.
This one?
Yeah, let's, yeah, that, that's the, the headworks right there, the existing headworks. And if you go to the next slide.
Um, Dave, maybe just for people that are watching, if you could explain some of the terms. I think I remember exactly what headworks is, but just like a couple of those things for.
Yeah, yeah, the headworks is where the wastewater first comes into the, into the system, in the wastewater system. And so that's the first point of treatment. Right now, we have a comminator in there that makes sure that nothing big goes through to the aeration tanks that might plug up a piping or a pump. And, but it, beyond that, it really doesn't do much else. And we all know, we've all heard about flushable wipes that are being used and those wipes just go right through the comminator. So what we're going to do at the, at the headworks is put in a mechanical bar rack, which I have a picture of the one that we'd be installing on that slide. And that will, that, the openings on that bar rack is quarter inch. So that'll be catching most everything of good, of large size. And that, that will make it a lot better for, for us as far as cleaning out tanks and potential luggage. The other thing is these wipes, if there's any sharps that happen to be in the system, they, the sharps tend to get into those wipes and it's a hazard to, to the operators. You know, they could have a puncture wound that it's not a good thing, so. And so that's, that's the headworks. Go to the next one. Audrey, thank you. And here is, this, this is old here now. We, we've already done another pour. That's gonna be the new headwork, current headworks building. And the floor is about ready to be poured here. I think it's gonna be Thursday or Friday that that's gonna happen. Just, just to note, you see these big pieces of foam? Because of the, the retaining wall, there's some concern about not putting too much pressure against that wall. So what, what they did, the, a bunch of those were put into the ground and, and covered up with, with gravel. And that reduces the amount of force against the wall. And let's see, moving on to the next slide. The, the other part of the upgrade is improved aeration blowers. That's a picture of the existing blowers. And, you know, they're 1960 technology. Very, very inefficient. And you know, so we're, go to the next slide, you'll see the newer technology blower that we will be installing, much more efficient. And, and on top of that, with the SCADA system, which is a computer system that automatically keeps everything in balance. You put in your set points where you want things to run and it keeps it in that range. So that'll also be a, an efficiency improvement as well. Right now, if, say in the summer, we, we have to put on an extra blower during the day because of the load and, and the heat. You know, come 5 o'clock, ready to leave, it's still hot. Gotta leave both of those blowers up and running. And I know, you know, at midnight, the demand will drop off and when we come into the morning, we have more oxygen in the, in the aeration tanks than we really need. So with, with the SCADA system, the SCADA will automatically shut off that second blower. And it'll be an energy savings overnight. And let's see, next slide. The return building, we're going to have a new motor control center, a new plant water system. The, the gray pump there, that's a piston pump that will be replaced. That's 1969 vintage. And right now, we, we have certain bacteria that we, we have too much in the system. We, we have to keep a balance. And what we're doing now, we're, we're actually bringing barrels of sodium hypochlorite into the return building in order to chlorinate the, the bacteria. And of course, that's a safety hazard. So instead, we're going to have a piped system from the main sodium hypochlorite tank. So that'll reduce that hazard. All new lighting, new valves, piping. And here again, this area will be SCADA controlled as well. The, we're gonna have a new motor control center, which will be away from the process. Back in 69, they didn't, hadn't grasped the, the challenge with potential explosions due to wastewater gases and so really, we're not up to code. We will be up to code after this, so. And let's see, the next slide. Okay, this is the, the top picture is our existing belt press. Here again, this is old, old technology. The, the issue with it is we don't take on a lot of water from the sledge with it. And so we're, when we send the assault to be composted, the, we're sending a lot of water over the road. And the bottom picture is a modern day centrifuge, which takes a lot more water out of the, the biomass. And so you're not only sending a lighter load, but you're sending a lot less loads as well. And a big part of our cost is, is transportation of the biomass for composting. So that's gonna be a big, a big improvement. And let's see, the next, next slide here. This is a picture on the left of the sledge storage tank being demoed. And on the right, work being done to set the foundation for the new press building and which will also house our laboratory. It's only been a couple of days, but this picture is old. Because right now, they, they finished putting in the gravel and they're ready to start forming things up to put the basement floor in. And next slide. And the, the last building that will be upgraded is our control building where we have our offices and laboratory. And so we need the new laboratory up and running before we can work on that building. And we've already done, going to the collection system, the, we've done two phases of the C Street Force Main replacement. And we're getting close to finalizing the plans for the Phase 3, which will finish the project. And we're anticipating we'll do that in the late fall or during the winter. We'll be going down Atlantic and across the waterfront on C Street. And so, you know, it'd be much better to be on the off season to put that in. And also on our, the agenda is the Norm Vega Pump Station upgrades and Washington Street Pump Station upgrades, which we're working on the engineering now. And that's, that's the update at this point.
Dave, just on the benefit of, because there's been obviously a lot of sensitivity to construction on Main Street and the like, could you describe what on the C Street Force Main, by the way, Matt and Sophie, this Force Main is required to take this route because we're no longer able to go into the harbor as we are today because of the Corps of Engineers. But what's remaining to be done to connect with the Bayview Street Pump Station?
Yeah, is putting a pipe from the front of the library. Down Atlantic, and then we take a right turn, um. On the waterfront. And uh. Then we uh. We intersect the existing pipe uh, on the shore. And uh, we'll discontinue the pipe that's under the harbor. And divert to the new pipe. At that point. So everything will be going over, overland instead of uh, underwater.
Is there anything left to be done on Main Street to connect with Bayview?
No, that's all, that's all been completed.
That's what people wanna hear.
Me too.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, good, they were able to. Force the Force Main in as part of the project when MDOT started, uh, the construction of the drainage system last fall, isn't that correct, Dave?
Yes, and uh, we did Commercial Street. Uh, in the off season as well.
I have a few quite, oh, Allison, go ahead. I'll, I'll go after Alison, I have a few questions.
Allison, go ahead.
Um, I also have a few questions, so I'll start with, I'll, I'll go with one, and then we can make friends or something. Um, so is, is any portion of. Of this project. Going to help address the overflows that we're having at the C Street and Bayview Street. Pump stations. Um, is the, the new Force Main gonna do anything, or is, are the overflow issues we're having. Completely. Separate from any improvements that we're making right now?
No, it, it will help because we're putting in a bigger uh, pipe. Uh, the C Street Pump Station was upgraded a few years ago, six or seven years ago now. And uh, when they upgraded uh, that station, they put in uh, larger pipe uh, pumps. That can add more capacity. But the uh. They're, they're not up to full capacity because the pipe is too small under the harbor. So we put a bigger pipe in now, so that will, that'll help alleviate the uh. Sanitary sewer overflows we have at the, at the C Street Pump Station. It won't eliminate all of them, but it, it'll definitely help.
Okay, so the main issue right now is not the capacity of the pump station itself, but the capacity of the Force Main.
Correct, that's correct.
You think that's about fifty percent of it, or how much more? Could it?
Oh, I can't remember the exact, I, I'm thinking more like uh, yeah, oh, as far as. As far as preventing?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's seeming like it's only taking about, you know, sometimes like an inch and a half of rain, depending on the. Conditions, it's not taking much to overflow that. Pump station, um. And I know there are a lot of variables and that we're gonna keep tipping away at the I and I component of it too, but I'm. Just curious how, you know, much of the problem you think might be solved by the pipe versus?
Yeah, I'm thinking it, it'd probably be more in the twenty to thirty percent range. It will be eliminated.
Okay, and then what about um, the Bayview Street? Pump station, is any, is that, none, none of this is gonna help that? Is that accurate?
Oh, when, when Bayview goes over, yeah, that's, that's accurate. Yeah, we still have to, like you say, we're not done uh, eliminating. Uh, sources of uh. Clean water bleeding into the system. Yeah, so we still have to continue to, to find places where we can eliminate that uh. That water.
Are there currently places, um, do we have a list of things that we know are issues? Right now, but we're just waiting to do the work, or is it a matter of? We've done the things that we know about and now our task is to find additional sources?
There are a couple of sources that uh, we need to tackle. Uh, they're not as big as the one we found on, on Fry Street at Chestnut. But you know, we need to eliminate them and chip away at it. We've kind of been hampered the last couple of years because of COVID, and you know, the crews being uh, split up. Which made it uh, impossible to get out and. Do a lot of camera work, like I would normally do. Uh, but now that we're back together. We, we'll get out there again and start looking. Uh, it's, it's easiest to find the issues uh, when the groundwater is up. That's where you physically see how much water is actually leaking into pipes. And so, you know, we'll, we'll still be out there. Looking uh, this summer, but uh, you see a little bit of standing on a joint, you don't know if it's just a minor amount of drips. Or, you know, if it's full bore water getting into the system, so.
Is, is there a written document anywhere that kind of goes through? Where we stand in this process, what has been inspected, what's left to be inspected, kind of like a. Master plan type of. Thing, or is that mostly stuff that's in your head?
No, we have a collection system manual. Uh, that it is approved by DEP. But uh, you know, when we get our consent agreement, we're, we'll be doing a, another plan. And it'll probably be more com- comprehensive than it is now.
But um, we'll, we'll cycle back, Allison, but let's, Sophie, you have a second here, go ahead, Sophie.
Thanks, Bob. Um, just a few questions, so how often do we get an update at the board on, on the, on this project?
I think the last one was about three, four months ago.
So it's like once a quarter, basically, okay?
And, and, and Dave, just to give us quick, quick one, Sophie, can you give us the schedule for the project in terms of where we're going with it and where it's stood? Hopefully to be completed.
Yeah, I was looking, that was exactly my next question, well, if you have a work on, like an Excel sheet work plan, I would love, just so I don't ask you, you know, where we are and are we on schedule or? Off schedule, um. Another question is, what is the life expectancy of this upgrade?
Well, um, typically, it's a. For the upgrade to any of this equipment, it's usually twenty to twenty-five years. But as it turns out, uh, a lot of the. Uh, equipment they were changing out at the plant uh. Has been in service for fifty years.
Yes, so that's exactly what I was gonna say, wow, this, this plant has been in, in service for fifty years and we, we're upgrading with something that's gonna last less. Um, so it's just a, a matter of maintenance and, and.
Exactly, preventive maintenance has been excellent at the, at the plant.
I oftentimes wonder, Sophie, how, how long new equipment lasts versus stuff from fifty years ago.
You're, you're probably onto something there too, yes, I agree.
Big difference.
And uh, my last, my last question, if I may, is, and I'm, I'll, I'll yield. You, you talked about the new centrifuge that will allow us to move biomass solids. More at, at a lower cost, do you, do you have a, do you have an, an idea, what's, what's the difference, what's the delta there between what we used to pay? And, and kind of how much we're gonna save, is, has this been computed?
Yeah, I looked at that uh, a few years ago when we were going down the road here with the upgrade. You know, it, it really depends, uh. The thing about uh, centrifuges, uh, you can get. Significant uh, reduction in water in your sludge, it. The only issue is uh. It takes more polymer to do that, and polymer is quite expensive. And so we'll, what we'll have to do is. Try uh. Different levels of dryness. And then look at the cost and then decide, well, okay, this is. This is the most uh, efficient for us. I looked uh, at, you know, a medium dryness versus what we have now, which is really wet. And uh. You know, I figured we could at least uh, eliminate sixteen modes per year of uh. Slugs going to the. Composting facility. We can do better than that, uh, ab- absolutely, probably another fifty percent better. Is just looking at that cost of the polymer.
If you, if you have a, a model uh, that looks at all the variables, um, I would love to be able to see it, uh, just, I'm, I'm curious. That's all my questions, thank you.
Yeah, I have a, I have a spreadsheet where we can uh. Drop in those numbers and. See how many loads we save.
Uh, I, one thing I wanted to add in my first tour of the wastewater uh, plant, uh, probably about five years ago. Um, it was apparent then that it should have been replaced uh, long before we're doing it now. It's not that it was rated to last fifty years, we're lucky that it lasted fifty years. Um, I remember in the original uh, tour, that the electrical panel, which covered the size of a huge wall. Um, they were looking for, they no longer made replacement parts for them. And if anything went wrong, they had to go on eBay to try and find used, used pieces to replace it. Uh, we're very lucky that we didn't run into some serious problems. So I just wanna make a, a note that uh, you know, this is perhaps something that we should have looked at years ago. And I'm glad that we're now taking, you know, direct action to fix these things.
Yeah, just a couple of years ago, we, we lost one of the smaller, um. Uh, units and. We, we found a used unit that fortunately, when we put it in, it, it worked, and it's still working. But yeah, that's my concern, you know, especially your bigger ported amp breakers, for example, you may not find one that will, will fit the slot. So I don't recommend fifty years.
Matthew, okay? Yeah, Allison, go ahead.
Um, so in terms of the property and facility itself, um. One of the things that was discussed during the planning board approval of the site plan was looking for um. Ways to facilitate public access. And to be moving toward taking the fence down for. Wildlife passage as well as pedestrian passage, are we making? Any progress with figuring out how, um, rather than having the entire. Property fenced off, um, we might be able to just have, um, you know, the day and dress components of the property. Fenced off?
Yeah, I've, I've thought about that, I haven't priced it out yet, the cost would be. But uh, I'm definitely have an idea how to do that, um. With some decorative fa- fencing in key areas. And that would uh. You know, the roadway out back, that would be uh, completely open at that point.
I mean, that would just be so wonderful because we're, you know, as we're looking at ways to make the Riverwalk happen, um. When you look at the fact, you know, we have that road that's right there, and I understand there'd be some difficult things with plowing and stuff like that, but. We could potentially save ourselves a lot of money and, and agony, um. If we could just make that road accessible, understanding that there are always gonna be like some risks that. Come with combining the public with. No facilities, but I just. I'm very supportive of, of trying to do that, so thank you, that's really. Good news, um.
Yeah, once we get done with the upgrade here, we'll have a look at that.
Dave, just in the way of closing, in the sense of, we've been thirty thousand people, always bring three questions, what do you think? Proximately as a percentage completed the project? What is projected completion date of the project, and are you seeing or concerned about any pending changes in magnitude?
Uh, I would say, you know, this is on the, off the top of my head, probably ten percent of the project. Uh, the uh, right now, the schedule is for. November twenty twenty-two uh, to be uh, completed. And then there's a period where things are tested. And uh, you know, we have a, a chance to have the contractor fix anything that isn't uh, right up to spec. After that. You're looking at the end of uh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and any concerns about any significant changes or design concerns, magnitude, not of minor?
No, no, so far, so good.
Good, keep it that way. Good, that's great, just in case anyone's interested, Sophie.
Just one last question, uh, and please pardon my ignorance, but uh, from, from the old uh, plant system. Is there any remediation we need to remedial action we need to take, or in the decommissioning, or is, or is that already? Included in the whole upgrade plan?
Yeah, we actually have uh. Did, we've already done some remediation, uh, as it turned out, the. Uh, some of the paint in the uh, the gold tank had PCBs in it. And so that had to go out for special disposal. As it turns out, they remediate the paint. And the metal is recycled. Uh, and then we also had some PCBs in the caulking and some of the old windows. And so those have, most of those have been remediated. And of course, gonna go out as hazardous waste. Uh, we still have some windows at the control building that we can't take out, because it. It'd be mighty cold in the winter with, with the. If I have to go through the winter, still use the control building with, with the laboratory. But that'll also be remediated as soon as we can.
Thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dave. Look forward to hearing the uh, next, next wave of events, thank you. Um, with that, we're gonna move on to the um, last item on, is wastewater commissioners, which would be. Um, this issue of the sanitary sewer overflow consent decree and supplemental environmental project. Dave or Audrey, do you want to lead the discussion on that one?
Sure, I'll um, I'll lead it and Dave can kind of fill any gaps, so. Um, this has been going on since twenty eighteen, um, and the, there, there have been a, you know, a series of sanitary sewer overflows. Um, at both the C Street and Bayview Street pump stations. And um, this is sort of getting back to uh, the question that Alison asked before about. Um, what components of the uh, upgrades to the collection system and work that's being done on the um. Pump stations is gonna help address some of the issues that are leading to these overflows. Um, so, you know, as a result of this, the DEP has been, um, you know, sort of working with us on. A consent decree where there'll be a bunch of conditions. Um, that they assign to us, and part of it is typically a financial penalty as well. And uh, the supplemental or the supplemental environmental pro- project is sort of a. Um, alternative to paying a fine to the DEP. Where the town, as the one who's um, entering into a consent decree with the DEP, can do a project that's completely. Unrelated to the issue, um, that, that led to the consent decree and doesn't benefit the town proper. Um, but benefits somebody in our region. Um, so I guess, I can, I'll talk about that in a minute, but um, the consent decree itself. Like Dave said, there'll be a number of, you know, of conditions and. Uh, the manual around the collection system and our plan for how we're gonna, you know, remediate the problems that are. Causing the sanitary sewer overflows, we'll have to sort of lay out in more detail, you know, what we're planning to do. And um, you know, DEP's been, you know, working with us, and they've been, um, you know, really. Really sort of um, understanding of, you know, the issues that we're facing and how. The town needed to make a major investment in upgrades to the plant as well as the collection system, so. You know, they, they've kind of understood that that was something that we needed to get in place, um. But they want us to do more work, of course, on, you know, some of the smaller issues that are leading to lots of. Inflow and infiltration into the uh, collection system that are ultimately causing, you know, a lot of the SSOs. And um, Matt and Sophie, if you have any questions about this, I, you know, we throw around terms like inflow and infiltration a lot, so. You know, please stop us or ask Dave or, or myself a question about any of that, um. You know, if it, if it's something that you're, you want more information about, but um. So yeah, in addition to, you know, assigning, signing a decree, coming up with a plan, um, the sup- supplemental environmental project. I, I, the, you could certainly make the choice, um, as the wastewater commissioners to. Pay the fine and not do a supplemental environmental project, but I would strongly recommend that we, we do that instead. I just feel like, instead of paying a fine to the DEP that really doesn't sort of directly benefit our region. You know, working with a local organization and doing something that's gonna have a benefit, you know, within our, um. You know, sort of broader community, I, I just think that that's a better. You know, use of taxpayer fu- or waste, um, repair funds and it, it's just a, you know, a, a good thing that we can do. Somebody in our region and. And it, it's just a, you know, a, a good thing that we can do for somebody in our region and.
Sophie, did you have a question?
Sorry, I do, um. So number one, we have to remediate this SSO overflow, right? And so that's the, the, the urgency is to make sure that we're know, we're, that we get in compliance with DEP, correct?
Yes, but it's a little bit complicated. It's not going to be like a, you know, we, we find because there are just so many sources of inflow and infiltration to the system that there's not one thing that we can do that's going to solve the entire problem. There's going to be like a series of things that we do over time that'll solve this problem.
And, and DEP is okay with that plan of action?
I mean, of course, they would like us to do as big a push as possible and take care of as much of the problem as quickly as possible. Um, but, you know, there is some practical limits to what we can do and when we can do it.
But so the, the cause benefit here is this, this issue has been going on since twenty eighteen, it's twenty twenty one.
Even prior to that, this.
Okay, so we're being fined for this since twenty eighteen. So basically, right? That's what the EP is saying?
So the, the one we're looking at now, the, we, and it hasn't been, I'm just sort of giving everyone the heads up. And at some point, Dave and I will bring back to you, uh, you know, a formal consent decree and, and you'll all have to accept it and approve it. Um, so this is just sort of like a, a prelude to all of that.
We got a notice of violation. It would probably be helpful, um, for you to see what we received in, um, I think it was October of two thousand eighteen, we got a, a pretty detailed notice of violation from the DEP which listed all of the, basically twenty four, um, illegal discharges between two thousand thirteen and two thousand eighteen, which amounted to over a million gallons of untreated sewage going into the harbor. Um, and so, uh, you know, a lot of that is heavily diluted with rainwater. Um, but, uh, it takes them because they're short-staffed and all kinds of other things. It takes a while for the enforcement action to come to be. And some of the recommendations that they made, some specific recommendations in that two thousand eighteen document that said, you need to increase the capacity of the C Street Force Main, stop it from going through the harbor and identify illicit, um, connections. And we did a major push to inspect everybody's basements, you know, identified, um, hundreds of, of connections and have been, um, chipping away at that. But I think, um, lately they've seen, we've continued to have these overflows, um, even, even with eliminating all these connections. So they're sort of circling back and they're like, hey Camden, don't forget that, um, we still have this ongoing violation and you're going to have to pay something eventually.
Right, what's, what's the magnitude of the fine you're, you're aware of right now?
Eight thousand dollars is what they were saying.
That's.
And that would be, that would be going back to the twenty eighteen. Eight, eight.
Okay, now there's a good potentially more fines for the other events that they haven't gotten to yet.
Possibly.
Yeah, that's one, well, I just, okay, just trying to put in order to magnitude on it for.
That's helpful because what I'm trying to understand is how much work do we still need to do? What's the plan to remediate those violations? Um, just trying to have an understanding of all the pieces of the puzzle, basically. And, um, and whether, and what's the cost benefit analysis, you know, are we better off paying the fine or doing a project and will, is the project usually priced above the fine? Um, or is it equivalent? What's the, what's your experience, Audra, or anyone on board?
The one that I would recommend you do is the cost of it's going to be slightly above the fine. So it's like a, I think a nine and a, a little under nine and a half thousand dollar project. And it would be to, um, at Aldemir Farm, it's to move the fence to, to, um, move cattle away from, further away from Lily Pond. So there isn't, there's less chance of, um, cow manure polluting Lily Pond. And, um, you know, that's, that'll benefit both the towns of Rockport and Camden because that's sort of a shared resource between us. So I guess, yeah, it's, it's more expensive to do, uh, supplemental envi- environmental project. Um, but I think that the benefit, the direct benefit to the community of doing the environmental benefit is far greater than just paying the fine to DB.
Okay.
Let me just point out too, that that, uh, fine reflects, uh, all the work that we've done, uh, last five or six years. I, uh, submitted all the invoices to, uh, DEP to show how much, uh, the projects, uh, we've done to try to, uh, mitigate the ish, the issue and, uh, you know, that, that, uh, that fine reflects that.
Right. Well, you, Dave, you mentioned though that the, one second, Alison, the, um, we've done quite a bit of work along the way to make improvements here and there. As a little disappointing to hear that the C Street Force Main is only going to be a twenty, twenty-five percent of the, of the issue. That's kind of a low percentage. But in addition to that, we lost time because of COVID, you know, a lot of stuff gets impacted.
Um, yeah, and I, you know, I've had that discussion with DEP as well and they, they understand.
Of course, of course, everybody should, but that, that means we're not as far as long as we would like to be at this point in time in terms of investigation. And that kind of my mindset, just an acceleration strategy. And I'm not suggesting you get two more arms. Uh, I don't think that's going to work. It seems to me we should be looking at, asking, maybe not to get answered here, but what strategies can we take to get outside help? To let us look at some of these things and accelerate the investigation under your direction.
Yes, we, we actually had Wright Pierce involved early on and actually before I came on board. Uh, but we could have, have another look at that and, uh, you know, regroup with them and see if they can help us.
To investigate. Alison, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of doing the, um, the environmental, um, project, um, although I think it's really needs to be only a very small percentage of what our focus is right now. If that's, um, it seems like we have a, a great project that's not that different from the fine that we would ultimately end up having to pay. And so of course, we would want to do something that can benefit Lily Pond, which has a benefit to both Camden and Rockport. Um, but that most of our focus needs to go toward major acceleration of making progress, you know, in this area. We're doing a lot of upgrades to our, to our treatment plant, but that's not actually where we're having the, um, you know, the issues from a regulatory standpoint. And I, we continue to have some of the lowest rates, wastewater rates in the region. Um, for this reason, we don't even qualify for help for, you know, financial aid or for help from the DEP in terms of correcting some of these, um, problems. Because from their perspective, we're already, we're, we're, we're charging our users so little that we are not demonstrating, um, that, you know, we are investing ourselves in solving the problem. So even though people have noticed that there have been some increases, um, in wastewater rates, I think Camden residents really need to be aware that we've, and we've had even like before, um, Dave, we've had really just rock bottom rates. And the result of that has been a, a real failure to invest in upgrading our collection system. So we haven't, I mean, jump in if you think I'm wrong, Dave, but we have millions of dollars um, of collection system upgrades to do, clay pipes in places that we don't even know. Um, so I, I guess I would like to see a, a, a really big investment in trying to solve this problem. I don't think that most Camden residents really want us to slowly chip away at raw sewage going into the harbor. I think there's a lot of political will, both even from tax, you know, even if we couldn't do it from rate payer funds, which I think we definitely can, um, I think there's support for taxpayer money going into this. It literally means every time we have like three inches of rain, we're just, we have a pump station overflowing into the harbor. And I think a lot of people aren't even aware of that. So getting Wright Pierce to do, uh, you know, I would support hundreds of thousands of dollars in investment in this issue. Um, and I think DEP is kind of saying what's taking us so long?
This is kind of a timely discussion because we, we were going to talk tonight about the wastewater, uh, budget. It seems to me, uh, again, it's, it's, it is, it seems to mark me for a long list of reasons. DOP, DEP, we're accelerating, we're, we're trying to respond, uh, there's a third party, quote unquote, experts, not that you aren't an expert, Dave, but you're got a job, a full-time and half jobs, it is, to, to spend a chunk of change to do some um, substantive investigatory work on an accelerated basis. And if we agree with that, and I would certainly support it, that probably needs to be plowed into that budget we're going to look at now on July sixth. I think there is some in there, by the way, I think there was some in that budget draft we had tonight, but I don't think it's enough.
Yeah, and that, that being said, you know, we're, I periodically I've been, uh, bringing another, uh, uh, crew of, to do inspections with, uh, in the sewer system just to speed up, uh, looking for, for issues. And we, we had, uh, that company, uh, on, I had them do Elm Street, Main Street and High Street. Not just inspecting it, but cleaning it. And we did find, uh, one fairly significant, uh, leak that we had to, uh, we have to, we have to fix, um. I just have to figure out just how to do that. Whether or not we can grow it or we have to dig. So that's, uh, that's where I am on that one.
The fixing is not always easy. I understand that, but identifying the problems goes a long way to get that fixed on your list. So we know we have to attack it. We can't get them all fixed in a month. But I, I would agree unless the other members just disagree that we accelerate the program by using, well, let me call them third parties for just the lack of a better term. Cause I think honestly, Dave, I think you tried, especially with the load you have at the wastewater treatment plant and the substation upgrades, that's a lot. Um, this is a fourteen million dollar project you're playing with there. Um, I just think we need to, there's plenty of third parties, including Wright Pierce, that could help us. But it's, it's not free and that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I, I guess in order, so we don't drag this into, uh, Wednesday. Um, I, Dave, I think that if you could come back to us with a recommendation of how to speed the process up to solve these problems, maybe by the time we, we go over the budget. Um, if you could do that, um, just to see what options we have. I think that'd be, you know, instead of going around in circles, that'd be the, the best thing to do.
Right.
Um, you know, and, and I think Bob's right, you, you know, the fact that you're running the wastewater department, which you've had to do all along anyway, which is your main job. And oh, by the way, spend fourteen million dollars upgrading it as your side job. Um, you know, what do we need to do to help you, uh, get this done without killing you in the process?
All right, I'll, I'll bring a, I'll bring a plan.
All right, I'll, some of you, some of you agree, Audra.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can easily get a proposal from Wright Pierce and, um, you know, look into, you know, what it, what it would cost to get sort of like an outside, um, entity to help us with inspections and.
That'd be great. I think that's a tremendously worthwhile discussion, Dave. Uh, I think it's a, we're trying to make it all easier for us and you and at the same time catch up the lost time that we didn't cost. Um, it just happened, but Sophie, you had your hand up. And Sophie's been politely raising your hand by your button.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be a good citizen here.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think also I would like to see a plan of what resources we would need to do the environmental remediation because the, the environmental project, um, again, for me, there's a cost benefit analysis to be done on a number of hands and days of work we need to contribute to make this project versus signing a check. And, uh, the way I'm looking at things, Dave, the, your team is probably already involved in so many things. So let's, let's, I, I want to be mindful in the way that we decide whether to do an environmental project is better or signing a check and, and understanding all the costs associated with the environmental project.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense. Okay, well, uh, Alison, you have one more comment?
What, just, just really quick, maybe a, um, quick plea because we're, we're doing so much, um, mapping of the stormwater system right now. Um, and I know Dave, you've been in contact a little bit with the same company to look at updating our mapping for the sewer system. It does kind of seem like it would make sense to move that forward. Um, just because, uh, you know, as we're mapping out all of the stormwater stuff, we are finding issues that are, are interconnected. And it's obvious that some of that mapping for the sewer system is not correct right now. And, um, so I just, just a little plug for saying I would be supportive of, of you. I know you said maybe you're going to wait and, and do that in a year or two to kind of even out the cost, but.
You've done it parallel.
Yeah, I was thinking next year, but you want to do it this year? We certainly are ready to do that.
Well, there's also a consideration of that, is that CAI? Uh, that, that's a consideration in addition to Wright Pierce, uh, that might be considered. Um, uh, you know, you, I both know, Dave, that certain engineering companies are visiting others. We need to, we need the services, whatever, if they're going to do some services, we need a mess. So I think I throw them into the, into the bucket and you guys decide what you want to recommend.
I mean, it really helps to know where everything is and to be able to have a, a database where you can even bring in your, you know, your, all of your camera data and have that integrated into the.
Right.
Um, GIS, so, so, anyway, thank you.
Absolutely, I definitely need an overhaul.
Uh, really quick, I, I think if we're done with this, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we, uh, adjourn this wastewater commissioners and, and reform as a select board.
Second.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Roll call, vote.
Thank you.
Matt?
Hi.
Sophie?
Hi.
Alison?
Hi.
Hi.
And Bob, five zero, thank you very much. And we are reconvened as select board. Thank you, David, and have a good one. We'll get you in the sixth.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. Um, on our, as select board, we have actually four, three items by charter that we're supposed to approve in terms of reappointment of positions. So we can take them and, uh, Chuck, just, um, uh, um, just to make sure we understand, uh, who we're appointing is the town manager. We know that is Audra. Uh, the road commissioner is Audra.
Dave St. Laurent.
That's right, Bob. And the harbor manager, of course, is Steve Pexley. Um, these are items that are in our charter and do require our, uh, approvals, so. Um, um, uh, do you want to take them individually or we can take them collectively unless we want to talk about them first?
I know that we, uh, reappoint the three positions and people aforementioned.
Very well put.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, any discussion? Roll call, vote, uh, Matt?
Hi.
Sophie?
Hi.
Alison?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And Bob, hi. To the, uh, to the ninth, I believe is the ninth item, which is a confirmation, like our charter does call for the, uh, the sec board to confirm certain positions there. So stated in the, in, in the, uh, in the charter, um, si- does, it's, since the organization, uh, has changed so much since the days of the charter being drafted to some positions that are really not directed by the charter specifically for us to quote unquote, confirm, whatever that means. Um, um, and, um, given there's a.
Before we, before we jump to confirmation, uh, do we need to, um, confirm, there's also Chris Farley and Jeremy Martin as health, uh, officer, an alternate health officer? That's in there, is in the packet?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got the whole suite, you know, like the code enforcement, the.
Oh, no, that, that, but that's item nine, right?
Yeah, that's all part of it.
I'm talking about item nine, which is, uh, which is the confirmation of that long list, Matt. Um, and, um, suggesting that there's a, not that most, all of them are not easy, I'll just say it straightforward. There's a couple on there that, um, that are not specifically mentioned in the charter and yet they're on this list. And I think especially given where we are right now, I suggest, unless you have an urgency to it, Audra, uh, we, um, we, we need to have a, I suggest a little bit of a discussion about a couple of, uh, of these positions because the fuzziness between the charter specification and the fact that we have them on the list. Um, if, if you don't, because, uh, to my knowledge, there's no urgency to doing these confirmations, is there?
No, you can just stick to, you know, the ones that are specified in, um, agenda item nine. So treasurer, which would be Marlene Libby, tax collector Liz Nowor, sorry, Kenower, town clerk, which is Katrina Oaks.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Matt is correct that there is another. If you look on page sixty-nine of the packet.
Right, supposed to do a confirmation as an appointment.
Right, Chris Farley and Jerry Martin are different than the long lists that. Right, Chris Farley and Jeremy Martin are different than the long list that includes. Katrina, Marlene, Elizabeth, it's a different item, I think.
I will make a motion that we, we hereby reappoint the following people in indicated positions, Chris Farley is health officer. And Jeremy Martin is alternate health officer.
I second.
Thank you. Motion is made, seconded, discussion. Roll call vote, Matt.
Thank you all.
Allison.
Hi.
Sophie.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Bob five zero, to these other one, two, three, three, is that correct, Audra?
Yeah, I I will make a motion that we reappoint the following individuals. Indicated positions, and that would be Marlin, Marlene Libby is treasurer, Elizabeth now, Canower as tax collector and Katrina Oaks is town clerk.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Roll call vote, Matt.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Sophie.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And blah, blah, that is your good, and and we're just, that's a great way to bring these to the other ones that are on the list to some, some way to our attention to. To to close on, like I said, they're not in the charter specifically because times have changed, there's a couple on there like that. And some of the personnel is changing and blah, 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 so we would, we don't want to leave that off our list going forward. But we, but since there's no urgency, I don't see any reason to debate those here now.
No, I would, I would agree there, you don't have to do that tonight.
In terms of item ten, which is action items, we have the first is the appointment. To the recently approved voter approved Mid Coast Internet Development Corporation Board of Directors. Just as a background there, I know Rockport has already named their director as Denise Mover. They voted on it last week, I believe, and the second director would be one in the town of Camden. To this corporation, so that's what this action is about, Mark.
Uh, well, I have a question first, do we need to do the, the. Beyond the long list of people, do we need, need to do Chief Gang, Gangney and Michael Gary as constables, or is that part of later on?
I think it's later on because that's kind of the chair.
Okay, then I make a motion that we, we elect Matt Siegel as our, nominate Matt Siegel as our. What's the word?
Director.
Director of Mid Coast Internet Coalition, and I'm in the wrong spot on my notes here.
It's Jenny.
I would just say, Mark, Bob, was that supposed to be in our packet?
It is.
It is.
I thought, I didn't, did it just go in our pocket?
What the appointment, you're talking about the appointment?
No, the the M I D C stuff.
I'm sorry, the appointment of the Mid Coast Internet Development Corporation is just an action item, there's nothing to back it up. It's just a, it's just to be a voters approved corporation whose, whose. Character as with formation that requires one director from each of the two towns who are currently signed on to it. And as I said, Rockport's down there, so we need to decide to name our director.
So to to specify it, as I have the the correct wording. I make a motion that we appoint to the Mid Coast Internet Development Corporation Board of Directors, Matt Siegel.
Allison, do we have a second?
I'm, I'm fine seconding that, but I just need to be brought up to.
That's fine, we have discussion.
So. Can we just slow down just a tiny bit, I know we talked about this.
Sure.
For, and we've read the interlocal agreement, but. Were, so the the bylaws have not been crafted currently, right, so. What we'll be doing is. And currently there are only two members of it, or there are two member towns, or?
Two member towns at the moment, here, Rockport and Camden.
And then what about Thomaston?
No.
Not until later, they.
Well, there's some issues going on there which we don't need to go into, but they haven't approved their enrollment quite yet.
Okay, so there are currently two towns and we would be like the the founding members or is it? And so one and only one director from each town, so it'll be, we'll. Be choosing somebody that's going to sit down with one other Rockport person and draft bylaws. I mean, I know they'll have help, but it'll just be too. Well, that seems like such a small group.
It did, well, there is a, I presume occurs, Matt, please correct me, but I believe the two directors. Denise and her appointee would be choosing then an executive director of the internet. Of the internet corporation as as two directors can do that. And so it would be, in effect, I guess, if you're really three people who will be working on the development. Of these, these critical bylaws, because we are, there's no question about any new corporation to develop, we are at the. The high leverage end of the system, a little positive thing or negative thing occurs now can make. Magnitudes of difference downstream, so it is a critical time.
And I I would say it is going to be a group of two to start out with and and they are going to have to develop bylaws. But I guess, you know, the goal is to get a lot of other communities involved as well, so. You know, in in the discussions to date, and I I think when the, you know, the new board members are sat, they're going to certainly want to work closely with. The communities that they've already been working with to make sure that there's buy in from everyone in regards to whatever they draft and approve. Presume what the directors are going to do, but I would imagine that's the tact that they'll take.
And I would only, hello, Allison, I would just back it up, that we've been working for about six weeks, almost two months actually, on bylaws. And using references from other organizations, including Down East Broadband Utility as a model. So we've been working with experts from the region and also experts from around the country in terms of. Developing the bylaws that it makes sense for us, and as well as the articles in the corporation. So it's not, it's not a new process. It's just with the approval by the voters at this point that we can move forward to create a legal entity. And then put this in place by creating the board of directors and as Bob said, appointing the executive director as well.
Is that going to be a volunteer position or at this point?
This one, yeah, we've been volunteering, everybody's been volunteering for just under a year.
That that could change as success breeds, but at this point it's volunteer.
Does, does this board have the ability, and I'm not, I'm. Totally supportive of you being representative, I was nothing, I'm just trying to make sure I understand because I have some experience with midco solid waste, which is. In some ways similar, and I've seen some of the. You know. Whatever, the bad stuff that goes along with all of this. Does this board have the ability to. Change our representative? Or is it, is it once you've been appointed, then. You're in place for a period of three years? Or one of the things that's happened in midco solid waste in the past has been kind of. You know, the the board not really paying attention and they, they. Choose somebody to represent them and then all of a sudden some issue comes up and they. Say, oh, we don't like the way our representative is voting and then they withdraw them and then is that something that's allowed?
Here. I'll back up to, and Bob, I don't know how much, should I be stepping back from this or should I be?
You're not appointed yet, Matt, so it's okay for you to remember the document we have. For the existence of this thing, they're voting, the voters voted for as a public printed done deal. So you can quote what it says to answer Allison's questions.
So Allison, twofold, one, the directors are appointed for terms. There is also language within the the corporation that they can be withdrawn. So again, but they are appointed for terms, set terms. And the other thing I just want to address in terms of midco solid waste, and we spent quite a bit of time with. Addressing, looking at the history of the weighted votes. And some of the issues that historically in terms of creating interlocal agreements and regional cooperation. And some of the hard feelings, for want of a better expression, that the weighted vote had created. And looking at different models, again, using Down East Broadband Utility and some others that have models out there already for us to examine. We went with one community, one vote, so.
Totally disagree with that, but I mean, I know that Deborah doesn't like it, so I've been on the governance committee with Deborah and midco solid waste and. Yeah, sure, hope is upset sometimes because they don't have a, as much of a vote as Camden, but they also don't as many, they don't represent as many people and they don't pay as much, and so. It does make me a little bit nervous to. In the name of like kumbaya with the other towns, just giving up all of Camden's power, but it doesn't sound like we've done that now.
Let me back up to the, the, the anti kumbaya, I mean, what we're trying to do. Instead of kumbaya is break down the the barriers in a sense, that again, because there's no recourse to the towns. That, you know, each town should have representation not based on population, not based on their input to the, to this particular utility. So again, there's no recourse to the towns, so as we started to look at models, we thought. You know, something that will give balance, that will give power to the small communities, that will make them feel, again, I'll use the word empowered one more time. And it seemed like at the time, as we were going throughout the state for the last six months, you know, excuse me, throughout the county for the last six months, we're trying to get feedback. That that would be something that would be appealing to some of the communities that we're reaching out to.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine because it's sent, but the biggest difference here with everything and the thing that makes us not need to worry is that this, it does not have the power to assess. Or tax the community, so it's an entirely different thing. If the select board independently wants to vote at some point to allocate some funding to support the effort. Then that's fine and voters can go through the process of deciding whether they approve that or not, but this entity that we created. Doesn't have the ability to do that to us, so there isn't, it's, there's no risk there in my mind, I guess, so.
Key difference to point out between like, you know, midco solid waste, for example, and and. Mid Coast Internet Development Corporation is that the interlocal agreement was designed to be general. And the bylaws are designed to be specific, and sometimes I think we've all found with midco solid waste, it's the opposite. Where the interlocal, well, not necessarily opposite, but the the interlocal agreement is very specific. And, you know, when Allison is a member of the governance committee or anyone else found something that. They wanted to change, if it were in, if it was in the interlocal agreement, it was literally. You know, an act by the citizenry of all four towns, whereas, you know, this was set up to be. Generals so that a lot of these issues could be addressed by the board of directors through the bylaws. So the hope was that, you know, they would have the flexibility they need to, you know, make changes that, you know, might. Cause issues for any of the member communities.
I think I would just absolutely agree with that, the idea of flexibility, I mean, we're dealing it with the communities, Audra, as you pointed out, we're also dealing it with the financial institutions. We need a certain amount of flexibility because we're creating a hybrid model. Or a quasi quasi municipal model, so you know, a banking institution, Bob comes into us and says, well, you're not really. The solid waste and you're not really a commercial entity, you are something in between. And as we started to hear this more and more, Allison, we thought it was important to have the flexibility in terms of. How the, you know, local was designed and then, Audra, to your point, how we can then work with the bylaws.
As as structured, basically, there's, there is not really a financial risk to Town of Camden or individual towns. Because the funding is coming from outside of tax base, it's going to come from various sources, the, there always is the political capital issue where. If fifty million dollars came down to wish from some entity and it was all spent on one town, you're going to hear some political capital about that. That's the question we measure that I would keep in the back of your minds, but I think the financial risk is, is the way, the way it's structured is just not there. Like it is midco solid waste.
I have a question.
Yes, Sophie.
So I'm a bit, I'm a bit concerned by designating a director, not having bylaws in my hand and not having any governance documents. And I'm wondering if. So I, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation, right? And the, the, how long is the term we're designated somebody for?
For three years.
Three years? That's, that's, to me, that's a concern because it's, it's a, it's a new entity, is going to be a lot of. I don't have any visibility on governance, structure, decision making, bylaws. I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Let, let me ask you a question, until we get someone there to help develop that. You know, like you said, chicken versus the egg, and there's nobody I know. More engaged and more knowledgeable about this than Matt.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the individual, I'm talking about the process here. I, I agree with you, I don't have any issue, issue with Matt's qualification and experience. I'm, I'm just slightly worried about the the process that. We, we may, I mean, typically you form in organization or group or task for that's tasked with designing. The bylaws, the governance, and then you elect directors once the, the governance structure is in place, so it's more of a temporary. Structure that does that, like a.
Yeah, and I think.
That's the question I'm asking, is that?
Excellent question, Sophie, excellent question, I, I think the part of, I know in the background, as my limited understanding that. That the directors are being nominated now because they want to open bank accounts because there are funds. That they're holding from Town of Camden and Town of Rockport and perhaps. Two or three other towns and they want to do those kinds of things. Perhaps, maybe Audrey, maybe I have some ideas here with your experience. Is there a way to appoint this director with some kind of a stipulation that the governance, the bylaws come back for. Well, review by the select board?
Yeah, absolutely, and I would, I would. I would say that it is sort of by, just like for all. Practical intents and purposes, you know, this isn't going to be the final board, you know, we're certainly hoping that more. Communities join on and it, it seems like they will, but they're. Waiting until that structure is in place, and so until that happens. It's really the responsibility of Camden and Rockport as the charter members to get that structure up in place. Before everybody else is, is going to join.
But they could bring back, they could bring back the bylaws and articles for.
And I think they're, everyone's expecting that because it's not, you know, we're, we're going to treat ourselves the same way that we're treating everyone else, so. You know, Matt and Denise and the executive director will be drafting bylaws and it'll be an iterative process with. You know, not only the other communities that. They're hoping will join the board of directors and and the corporation, but also Camden and Rockport as the charter members. So, yeah, it certainly won't be something that. You know, Matt and Denise do in a vacuum and nobody ever sees it again, I think that there's like full intent. For all of that to be brought back to Camden and Rockport as well as everybody else who's, you know.
And by way, I know, Sophie, if I can jump in, Allison, for one moment, in terms of timing, bylaws are drafted. They are with Bernstein Sure, so it was key that they were vetted through outside legal. At this point, and so what happened is we just have, in terms of timing, they are at Bernstein Sure at this point, so just so you know.
It just, it's just for me, it's a matter of due diligence, it's nominating someone to a game, I don't have the rules to, it's, it's. It's counterintuitive to my lawyer background.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with Sophie that it's, it's, you know, there's definitely like a funny feeling. A little bit, but I'm wondering, would there be any reason to? Would it in increase everybody's confidence or maybe even the confidence of other community, other towns if. Prior to the, to the bylaws being approved, if our representative was, could it be Bill Kelly? Could it be the town manager, is there? Is there any benefit?
There.
That, I mean, we do also have, like, in in terms of making sure that we're protecting the town and the, you know, the, the terms. Of our representative and all of that, we have the ability to re, to to remove our representative and change our representative at any time. And so I, I guess that is a protection too, and also. Oh, the other question I had is, is this, since it's a quasi municipal entity, it is not a quasi, it, it isn't. So is there any public meeting requirement or the, no? I see yes or no.
Well, yeah, there's no public requirement, it's a, it's a, it's a private corporation, it's. Isn't it?
No, it's the state, under state stature, it's a nonprofit utility.
Nonprofits don't have a public meeting. Nonprofits don't have a public meeting requirements.
Yeah, I don't know. We have any public meeting requirement for approval, for example, of bylaws or articles. Yeah, I don't believe there's any, I'm not aware of any requirement for that, Allison. I've never seen that before. There's a couple of ways you can cut it. It does, and by the way, Matt, this has nothing to do with you being the right.
I know. And again, this I just, I'm I am with you as as whatever makes you comfortable because
there's we could, there's two alternatives. We could name a person and say we require that it comes back for review by the select board town. Alternatively, we could say pick or Audrey or somebody say for X months. She'll be the initial director so that she can knows when to bring it back to us. And then after that, we want to transition that to Mr. Steg.
We also have the option of perhaps tabling it, having those bylaws appear, having them be reviewed and then taking this up at a later session. That would not be ideal in the sense
No, it wouldn't. I know, you know, like, on the one hand, it has been such phenomenal energy, Matt, thanks to you and others in this whole effort. And on the one side of me is trying to keep that rolling fast. And at the same time, trying to reflect with Sophie and Allison and I, in my belief is the most important thing that these bylaws and articles are extremely important. They can be changed by the corporation, but there needs to be some surety by the Camden Select Board that we're aware where this ship is going.
Could we, could we name Matt as the in an interim director until the bylaws are approved? So so because
Yeah, you can, you you can.
I just want, I just wanna
I understand. Well, that's what I was kind of saying with, you know, in all fairness to especially you, Sophie, and Matt, you're kind of doing the board and the political capital that we have to deal with here and there. And and it would be helpful to alternative was an interim director in the way of somebody else. Tent, because I don't want to take the intent away of Matt being the principal charger. He's earned it, he deserves it. And I'm totally, so that's one of the reasons why I'm with many, I'm happy he won the election because he's he is a select board member and that's that's great. That takes a little political capital problems away. So you have a couple of options. There's ways of doing it. But I think the bottom line of what I'm hearing is we want to make sure these bylaws and articles of corp come back for, in Matt's saying, they're already available anyway. We could have those available review on on July the sixth meeting and make a contingent on our accepting the bylaws because we can I mean, I don't believe anything in the in the corporate document that says we can't change or withdraw of our director appointee. Is that correct, Matt?
I'd have to review. I don't have the answer for that right now in terms of my understanding from without the document in front of me is that you can, you can withdraw. You can change or withdraw. Again, for simplicity, Bob, and I would throw back to you, Sophie, as well. And I don't know if Deborah and Denise would be fond of this, but the idea of tabling it, and I'm just gonna put it out there one more time, so it can be reviewed and then voted upon on July sixth. Might be a very clean way of doing this.
Especially since we know they're already existing. That helps.
Allison, it might be a simple one.
I mean, I also think though that since that, you know, there are discussions going on in other towns about whether this is safe, is there a risk to the town? That there's value in us being honest in sort of the fact that when you when you game it all out in your head about what the actual risk is to the town, there isn't one. I mean, they're just by by appointing a director right now, I I can't see an actual scenario where there's a, I suppose if we you know, the the worst case scenario would be we appoint Matt tonight, then with no public meeting requirement, they he and Denise meet in secret and approve bylaws. As and at the same time, they also admit another town and another director that now out votes Camden. And so then when we finally get wind of this odd thing and terrible bylaws, then we go to switch our director out. And now there's another town and we are in the minority and I just don't see it. There isn't some actual
Yeah, I get your point. I think I think we're, you know, we're kind of in a rock and hard place here. I think we can, as I said, we got a couple of options because I have to do nothing. But I I I think one of them is to could name interim director subject to final approval on July sixth after we approve the of the the bylaws and articles of preparation. We can do it that way. I I don't think we can complicate this worrying about what are the towns do or don't. That's already established. But I I I or an interim director in the form of another person with the intent on July sixth to make the permanent person Matt. Again, upon approval or or review after review of the articles corporation and the bylaws. I think one of those two.
I have to ask a question here. If, you know, I don't understand the problem because if we elect Matt and he goes in and he doesn't like the the bylaws and stuff, he can bring them back to us. What are we gonna? I I can't even articulate that my frustration with this problem is we're going down a rabbit hole. We don't need to go down. These helped build this from from day one. If, you know, to to put a temporary person in because some things are gonna happen. I understand what this is going on, but I think we're spending a lot of time on an issue that really is not that important. I'm sorry, Sophie. I understand the concern, but you know, like you said, you started off with, hold on, you start off with the chicken versus the egg. We need to get this started. Best way to get started is put our best person, person most knowledgeable about this in the seat to make sure that these things were handled properly. And that's what we're doing. And delaying it to so we can read something, I'm sorry, I don't get it. I think it's I think I think we're being ridiculous. That's just how I feel about it.
Allison, let's let's we got to bring this thing to closure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I I see the other side to it too, and I like that mental exercise, but also when I think about it, we what voters just approved also outlined a process and it was known before that this would be the process that we were approving in our local agreement and that the next step was that the town was gonna have to choose a director to represent us in the creation of bylaws. And so we knew that was gonna be the process and people voted for it. And there, we also knew that there wasn't a perfect process, but you know, that was the process we chose. We outlined it, it was presented to voters. It was overwhelmingly approved and now we're choosing a representative. So I guess I think that we should move forward with it.
And perhaps what we do is our alternative to just sort of marking approved the director nominated and we have a motion second for what the proviso that we still would like to review. The bylaws and and the Matt just bring them back on the sixth of July for us to review.
I would bring them back ASAP. I mean, again, I'm trying to be in your position.
You're 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 kind of between the rock and hard. I didn't want to put you there, but I think Mark, if you're in agreement, that's why I would suggest you slightly modify your motion.
I think it's the easiest, simplest way to way to move forward. And I think I'd like to call the motion because there's a motion on the table. I'd like to call.
Hey, repeat the motion.
Uh, the motion is nominate Matt Segal for the Director for Midcoast Internet Development Corporation Board of Directors.
And Allison, you seconded that, I believe. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Sophie.
I vote I on the on the understanding that we will review the bylaws.
Allison.
Hi.
Marco.
I.
I'm not sure. I should go ask Matt to put his vote, but I will, Matt.
I think I have to abstain on this one.
I think you do too.
I think there's a conflict of interest if I'm
He's, no, he actually can. He can, you can vote, but that's motion. You didn't make it a second. You can vote.
Not case, I would be in favor of that guy. He's working home.
Okay, and I I I I vote I also in the same qualification as Sophie, just in understanding and we'll get a chance to see some of these things that we go for. Great, I'm moving upward to and by the way, it's very exciting. We're looking forward to the same managing map that was put into you and others in the last six, eight months. It's phenomenal.
That we've never had anything, I don't think, approved with such a margin. Only sixty seven people voted against this in Camden. And there was, there was over five thousand dollars in in Facebook ads targeted ahead of time negatively against this, which is also unprecedented. I mean, that's just an extraordinary accomplishment and all the time that you guys spend going around and answering people's questions and it's it's really, really exciting. So.
It's the second time in one year that we've had to be able to say, don't mess with Camden. Terms including semen. But anyway.
Before we, I just want to make it clear that, I mean, part of our responsibility as community members and in with this whole operation is to make sure those bylaws and artists of corporation gets you ASAP. It's gotta happen. So.
Understood. We understood the urgency.
Thank you.
Item B is the appointment to Midcoast Economic Development District Board of Directors. And to further frustrate you, Sophie, this is typically referred to as MCD. So when you hear Audrey talk about MCD, it took me three years to figure out what she was talking about when she said MCD. I finally put it together. So you're ahead of me by years. Anyway, Audrey, you have been our appointees, accurate.
You actually have two appointees. I've been one of them and Roger Moody is the second. And Roger has recently sent or not, it actually wasn't that recent. He resigned from his position on the MCD Board of Directors and I believe he was on the Executive Committee as well. So he he informed me that he wasn't gonna do it any longer. And I just thought while we were appointing our Midcoast Internet Development Corporation Director, we should also I'll presume that you're happy to re-up me for MCD as well as choose another right, the board of directors from Camden.
Right. Maybe just for Sophie and Matt, but in case they don't already know what MCD is.
Certainly. So MCD is our Regional Economic Development District and regional planning organization. So it has, it has two major functions. So as an economic development district, it's it's an entity of the Economic Development Administration, the the Federal Economic Development Administration. So it receives funds every year to do regional economic development planning. And by being a member, we have access to a number of different federal grants. One being the Economic Development Administration's just sort of general infrastructure funds. So I think, you know, a good example of projects in our regions that have been, you know, funded with that money would be the redevelopment of Front Street Shipyard in Belfast and the Rockland Fish Pier. You know, the just sort of the, or sorry, the redevelopment of the Rockland Fish Pier. So sort of major economic development projects that it there's some component of public infrastructure that needs to be either built or upgraded in order for, you know, for it to sort of facilitate an economic development project. And it has to be public infrastructure because the idea is that it's not just benefiting one business or entity, but it could potentially benefit a number of them. And another is the Northern Border Regional Commission Funds. And there have been a number of those projects that have been funded in our region, Rockport Sewer Extension. Thomaston, there were a number of buildings on their main street that were upgraded with those funds. South Thomaston had the road that connects to Sprucehead Island is going to be upgraded with the use of those funds. The the list goes on and on. But in order to have access to that money in the first place, you have to be a member of an EDD. And it used to be that just the service center communities in Knox County, so Camden, Rockport, Rockland and Thomaston paid dues to be members of MCD. And it was only recently that Knox County started paying dues on behalf of the entire county. So it covered all of the service center communities as well. So that's, that's one important function that MCD plays, but it also took over the role of being the regional planning organization for the mid coast. It used to be a an organization called the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, which which had to close its doors and that responsibility went over to MCD. So MCD provides technical assistance to communities with you know, ordinance development and they do transportation planning and just a number of other planning functions on a regional basis.
Do you have a recommendation for a replacement for Roger Moody?
I would recommend that it's Jeremy Martin.
Any other questions or comments?
Then I I will make, I'll say I'll make a motion to appoint Audrey Kayler and Jeremy Martin to the Midcoast Economic Development District Board of Directors.
For a second? No second.
I mean, I'll second for discussion.
Discussion.
I feel like everybody wants some of Jeremy's time and that it is very hard to come by. Sometimes I understand it would be a natural fit for that role, but town I would have to better understand the the benefits. I'm just really worried about he does not seem to have enough time to meet all the you know, demands that people have for him. And it's hard to sort out priorities sometimes. So would there be any benefit to having it be somebody that is not a staff person? I guess I just haven't, I haven't thought about this. I'm sure you've thought lots about it, Audra, and I generally just defer to your.
Yeah, I mean, yes, his role. So I'm I'm on the Executive Committee as well. I'm currently the President of MCD and I'm dropping back to Vice President this upcoming year. And the Executive Committee, we meet monthly and the board meets quarterly. So I I guess I would I would like it to be somebody who's very plugged in with the town and understands what's going on and what our sort of projects and priorities are. Because that it just makes it easier to kind of, you know, give Camden's perspective on the board. I think that, you know, he wouldn't, he wouldn't be on the Executive Committee in the upcoming year because they've already put together a slate. Be you know, sort of approved at the General Assembly on the twenty fourth. So I think it's, I think it's manageable, given that it'll be a quarterly commitment of an of an hour.
Anybody else?
In terms of commitment and mandatory time, I could see that it would only be an hour, but if the generally the benefit to being you know, the reason to be on a board is to to use it as an avenue to either make the board better, make the organization better, or get a lot you know, out of it for the representative. It just seems like maybe if some, if there, we could take a couple of weeks to to think about it a little bit more about.
I guess the MCD board really isn't structured that way. That's more of the role of the Executive Committee. That's there. They do more of the hands on stuff.
I've got two hands up. Want Marcus first and Sophie.
Uh, my question, Audrey, is we've heard that he would be your choice. What does Jeremy say about taking on the responsibility?
He's, he's fine with the idea of serving on the board. I think he would have a problem if you know, if he were expected to be on the Executive Committee as well, because like I said, that's more of a commitment.
And and my second question, would you have any other alternatives?
Well, like I, I mean, like I said, you know, it really, it needs to be somebody who's pretty well engaged with what's going on the town and what our needs are in terms of both planning and economic development. And I I guess like I've seen, I've had, like, the frustration that I've had with MCD is that there are a few people who have just been on the board for years and years and years. They really like it, but I, they aren't always incredibly plugged in with the communities that they're representing. So incredibly plugged in with the communities that they're representing. So I feel like sometimes, um, you know, MACED hasn't always gotten, um, board members with the best perspective on what's currently happening in their communities. And also, you know, some of them used to be on select boards or they used to be, you know, in positions where they were a lot more engaged. And it's just been really hard having like former select board members from certain towns be on the Board of MACED because they don't, you know, former select boards or former staff people because they just aren't really current on what's going on and they can't. Uh, yeah, they can't advocate on a local level for things that are important to the organization and vice versa.
Right. Sophie?
Yeah. So, uh, Audrey, you supervise Jeremy, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to trust that you're making that decision, knowing what his workload is and that he's capable of handling it and that you will monitor how it's going. Um, uh, if we appoint him.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Sophie. Allison?
Just still wonder if it's not a missed opportunity to get people, we're, we're trying hard to shift some focus to more regional planning in the past. We've all spent hours and hours trying to just get the, you know, Knox County Budget Committee to approve six thousand doll, you know, an additional little bit of money for MACED funding. Um, it, it, it just seems like an opportunity to get some more people involved at the regional level, um, like, uh, you know, asking Sharon Pullman to do it or something.
She's already, she's already on the Executive Committee. She's already a member.
Hmm. All right. Well, I mean, I trust your judgment in the long run. You know the most about us.
Like, I think that my chair, of course, anybody wants to overload Jeremy, he is overloaded at times and Darrell Green knows that and anybody. So you, I'm going to have to mark that really closely. That's your job. Uh, Mark?
Uh, I just have to add that, uh, I just heard from Jeremy and his quote is, I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, with that, without any comments, I'm going to roll call vote, Matt.
Um, hi, if Jeremy is good with it and Audrey is good with it, let's, uh, you get it.
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Marco?
Hi.
Bye-bye, five zero. Okay. Thank you very much and good luck with that, Audrey. Onto item eleven, which is the first of, um, a number of times, um, Sophie and Matt, we schedule, try to schedule workshops. There'll be a number of them as we go forward. The first and probably most important was to schedule what we call the select bar, select board priorities, um, workshop. Um, we will, we will have, of course, available to us the priorities that the select board of the last year had established as priorities. And how do we get copies of that? We can provide. But, um, this is an important meeting to, um, get the majority opinion of board members as to where time and effort, uh, the board's time and efforts, uh, the majority of the board sees that staff needs to, to pay attention to. And that's the primary function of this. Um, and, um, you know, this is usually this is, actually we did in July, as I recall. Um, but, um, it can be anything, uh, that works for our schedules, uh, from now until the, well, the second week in July, I wouldn't go much longer than that. But the, the process here would be to pick a date and time. See, workshops are public. Uh, they're, they're, they're YouTube, you know, recorded just like this meeting is and, um, but it's an opportunity for us to bring someone of specific issue. This is in this case, priorities. So with that, does anybody have any preference for times and dates in the next weeks? Not hearing any. We'll have to take a look at the calendar.
So I can, I can already tell you that I'm, I, I'm traveling to West Africa for business starting on the ninth and I'll be back in town on Saturday the seventeen. So that week, the, the week of Monday, the twelve is out.
Is that in July?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So I, I see that week it's in between our select board meetings. So it's not an issue. How about, um, we look at something like, um, July the eighth, just will throw a date. It's a Thursday. Um, does anybody have a problem with that date? Marco, you're, you're squinting.
I do, I do have a, uh, no, on the eighth, I'm good.
Okay. Um, Matt, Allison?
I should be fine. Um, preferably not the evening.
I was going to say time of day also, let's, let's, let's talk about that. Let's peg July eighth as the date. Now, what time of day can work? We always have this issue with people's workloads and other businesses and blah, blah, blah. Um, yeah, during, during the day would be beneficial. Mark?
Uh, I was going to suggest we find out from Matt and Sophie what their schedules are like.
Okay. Matt and Sophie, what time of day would work best for you? This is going to take in the order of an hour and a half.
So anytime after one P M, my afternoon is wide open. I already have, uh, commitments in the morning.
Okay. Matt, would one P M work for you?
Yes, we'll make it happen. Allison, Mark?
Uh, one P M works.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one time that I, we have a standing meeting for river stuff, but we could, with this much notice, I can change it.
Okay.
No, we can make it two P M too. I mean, I, I would say anytime after one P M.
When, uh.
Actually, that would be great. If we could make it two P M, that would be.
Two P M. I, I don't have anything until four, so that should give us enough time. So let's peg, let's peg then that the date would be July eighth. I've got to write this down before I forget. July eighth at two P M. Um, now, uh, question is, we can, we still have the option. We can do it. Uh, Zoom or we can do it live as we did, um, to the, the other day here. What's your prefer? Anyway, it's going to be on YouTube.
Um, I'd be fine with doing that one in person. That's your preference.
Okay. Why don't we do it on July eighth here in the French conference room and just at the tables and it'll be recorded, uh, because we've done that with all of our workshops and in our recent administrations, uh, two P M on the eighth. Okay. Thank you. Um, the last items are discussion items and the first of which was Audrey, an update on the parking management study. And this will be a new topic for Sophie, I think, and for Pat, I guess.
Yes. So, um, we had been, uh, waiting for the consultant, um, that we had engaged to start the, um, parking management study. And I'm happy to report that, uh, John Burke is off and running with it. Um, I've had some of my, uh, staff collect some data. He was looking for all of the, um, space counts for all of the public and private parking lots within a quarter mile of the downtown core. And that's, um, defined as the five-way intersection, a quarter mile out from that and, and sort of a radius. And so, um, we've got that information. Another thing that I've been tasked with is sort of coming up with a informal group um, to just sort of, you know, work with John as the study's unfolding and, um, you know, a few people will be the usual suspects like, you know, uh, Randy Gagny, the police chief, Dave St. Laurent, the Public Works Director, Jody Hanson, the Finance Director, because it, it could have a financial component to it. Um, in addition to, you know, some community members who, um, either own businesses or property downtown or just generally know a lot about the downtown parking situation. So um, I've got a few people that I'm chasing down to see if they would, uh, be willing to be involved in that. But I do need a, a select board member who has an interest in, in sitting on that group and you know, kind of working with us and John as the project unfolds. So that's one thing I wanted to bring to all of you is to just get a volunteer to help out with that.
Uh, Audrey, can you explain a little bit more about what, what you want to accomplish with this? What, what the goal is?
Yes. Um, John is going to be looking at, uh, all of the available parking in that, that sort of quarter mile core and coming up with a management strategy for, you know, what we can do to best utilize the parking that we have available, both public and private. So, you know, what are, what are opportunities, um, outside of the current system that we have where, um, you know, it's very sort of manual where we mark out every single space and, and how long, um, you know, cars can occupy that space. And then we have the officer walking around chalking tires, writing tickets. So trying to find out, i- is there a better way that we can sort of, um, meet the goals that we have for parking in the downtown, which is, you know, availability of parking, um, you know, for people who are going to be here on a short-term basis in some of the, um, locations that are closer to the businesses and trying to incentivize people who are parking on a long-term basis to park in some of the, you know, satellite lots. So how, you know, what are the different strategies that we can put in place to create conditions for that? Um, so that'll, that'll be what John looks at. And he'll look at all of our, you know, our current ordinances and practices, what we have available. And, you know, hear a bit more from the group about what we're looking to achieve in terms of outcomes. And then he'll, you know, he'll come up with a, a plan for us and, um, you know, a strategy that we'll need to implement.
Okay. Matt, Matt has his hand up. One second, Mark.
And just quickly, uh, Audrey, have you reached out to the planning, uh, board? It being that we spent so much time on this and I, they might be, there might be someone there who would be keenly interested in this, what would be essentially follow-up to what we've been doing for the last six months.
Yeah. So we will look at a, a planning board member as well, being one of the people on that group.
Yeah, I think they would appreciate that immensely.
Sure. Mark, you have your hand up again.
I, I was just going to say, I, I think the goal you're, you're looking for is developing a paid parking, uh, proposal for Camden. Is that, am I correct on that?
That would be part of it, certainly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Yeah. Do you need, Audrey, do you need a volunteer tonight to step up and want to be that person from the board?
Yeah, if, if you all feel ready.
I think I'm going to throw it darted Sophie's head.
Yeah, I, I was, uh, this was one of the things I, I said in one of my interviews that got me a lot of, uh, I got a lot of interest in my position on this. So they come in. Happy, happy to serve.
Unless we have disagreement, because I'm not going to volunteer. Um, uh, we'll, we'll peg Sophie, uh, aboard.
Sophie, take one step forward, please.
There you go. Yeah, we'll take, four of us will take one step back. Allison, you had your hand up. You want to make a comment?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm quite happy, um, that Sophie wants to do it. Um, it's one of my least favorite issues in Camden, um, but one that definitely needs to be tackled. Um, but I, I just wanted to mention quickly that we do have a number of studies, um, that have been done, studies and reports that have been done in the past that are really quite good. Um, even, you know, the downtown master plan, I was reading that again recently, sort of with new eyes. And it's amazing. Um, a lot of the recommendations that were made then, um, and even recommendations made by previous parking committees, um, still pretty much hold weight. Um, and so the, the thing that has always happened is just lack of political will to do. But, um, everybody agrees kind of is, yeah. So, um, be strong and brave and thank you for tackling this tough issue in Camden and.
And most important, have fun. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, next item, I guess, Audrey, you probably lead this one too, which is, we've had a discussion before about inviting our county commissioner that represents our town and area to, uh, select where I mean, you want to update us on that discussion in your opinion?
Yes. So, um, I, I had a conversation with Sharon Pullman. She's still very much willing to come and speak to the select board. Um, unfortunately, some of the dates in, um, June were difficult for her to make. Um, so I guess, you know, just coming back to you all, um, it, it would probably be good if we gave sort of like a range of, of dates. And I, I just wanted to get a sense of how, how soon would you all like to have her to a meeting? Or, you know, do you want to sort of give yourselves time to have your priorities workshop and yeah, I just want to make sure that when we, we have her come speak to the select board, we're, we're just, you know, um, bring off on all of the things that we want to cover off on, because there's, you know, there's a few different.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. The regionalization strategy should be a side discussion of the priorities thing. And I think, uh, I suspect that we'd be pegging, well, possibly July twentieth, uh, which is the second select board meeting in July, um, and see if that works for her. And if it doesn't, we'll, we'll take it from there. Um, you know, you know our meeting dates, but go ahead, Alice.
Who is July twentieth, uh, select board meeting?
Well, the eighth is, um, you know, the Thursday before, a week before the eighth. So I thought it'd be good. I, I think it's a good idea to discuss this in more detail.
I think so too. Also, I think, um, we often talk about our other, um, representatives
Mm-hmm.
and kind of, um, failure to coordinate on priorities. Um, and I, I would like to see us also asking, um, you know, Vicky Duder and Dave Miramont, maybe even in a combined workshop, um, to, to be able to try to sit down with them at some point to talk about, you know, legislative priorities, regional priorities. Um, it's, and I don't know if all of this can be done separately or if some of it would make sense to do, you know, group them together, but we, we miss some opportunities because we, we fail to communicate with the other representatives that we have on different boards.
Yeah, you're good points. I think maybe we start it off on the eighth and then we can decide to have, uh, we could even do, and even though Sophie may be gone the following week, we could have a, a, just an update with, uh, the representatives and Senator, um, the following week if we want to keep pushing to the twentieth. But in the meantime, uh, we should check Sharon's schedule too, because if she can't do the twentieth, we're, we're popping into the first meeting in August, which is like August second, I believe, is the first meeting in August. Uh, do we have, is that right? Uh, on, maybe it's whatever. It's just the first, first couple of days of August. But I, I think that's a good point, Allison. I think we, we, we need it. We, we, we know we need to get more united. We know we need to be on the similar pages with, um, our, our representation too, because this is a, a serious matter. We have to pay a lot more attention to. Well, let's start off on the eighth, uh, discussion and then we'll decide from there how we schedule. But in the meantime, Audrey, maybe just check with her schedule for the, the, you know, a couple of select board meetings after the, after the sixth, which would be the twentieth and whether the first one in August. Okay. All right. Um, on to the third item, which is a committee process update, as it's spelled. Um, and basically, I, I think, you know, Sophie and Matt, you know, that we select board, the prior select board put the committees and, and for the most part on a hiatus for lots of reasons and, uh, until, well, we, we actually said until July first, but, um, and with limited, uh, you know, special situations, they've not been meeting. Um, and I think we should, we should talk a little, just a little bit here about what process we want to take forward to start unfolding, uh, that blanket, now those sheets and see how we, what we do and how we do it. Um, there are what, twenty, Audrey, twenty something committees and.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. It's a, it's over twenty. Um, not, in my opinion, there's certainly not going to attack this in a one session kind of a thing. There, there are complications and, um, perhaps what we want to talk about the process here is that well, perhaps do some mini workshops as we go forward, uh, next month's time period. I don't want to scare anybody about months and years, but whatever to, to, um, prioritize, um, the, you know, uh, addressing certain committees and seeing what their roles, the board thinks their roles should be going forward or not. And, um, I, I'd just like to throw that out for discussion. Allison?
Um, this has been such a perennial conversation in Camden. Um, and the only thing that ever seems to happen is that new committees get added and then old committees remain and it's become something that is really hard to keep track of. And each time that we've tried to talk about and kind of sort out, okay, which committee should do what and what do we really need and where are the, you know, the deficits on the select board where we really need some help from committees and where are the things that the select board should just handle it? It turns into too big of a conversation for us to be able to tackle, um, when we try to look at it like, you know, how do we come up with a committee policy? Um, I think I would like to see us try it maybe a little differently this time around and kind of focusing committee by committee, um, and looking at the ones there, you know, there are some that are discretionary and there are some that are, um, referred to in our ordinances that we must have and they are part of the process. And we, we know that, um, you know, for instance, with changes to the harbor ordinance, um, we, that all requires harbor committee review. Um, we went through a process where we, um, allowed a lot of new people on the harbor committee. Um, and I think, um, like that's, that's one area that's. And I think, um, like that's, that's one area that's a, a, a pretty big. Priority where the select board kind of needs to have a better understanding of, um. You know, who's on that committee, what are, what are they thinking? We're gonna need them to rely heavily on them as we're reviewing, um, like the Lyman Morris project. And things like that. And so if we could start out by doing a few, you know, some workshops with. Some of these key committees that we know we're gonna need to work hand in hand with, um. And then that will help us in the future as we decide. When vacancies come up, like the harbor committee is a, is a big one. We know that some, you know, members may need to recuse themselves because they're involved in. This project. If we, um. Spend a little bit of time, I think, with just, you know, a workshop with the current members, talk to them about the priorities, then we'll also be in a much better position. To know when we go to appoint people to that committee, you know, what, you know, what do they need? So. Yes, I would like to see us not be in a hurry to make, um, a decision and a work plan for every single. Committee, but say we're, we're gonna, we're, you know, we're gonna work kinda individually with a couple committees that we know we're gonna need a lot of. Um, support from, and we have an actual task for them coming forward.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, you had your hand up, Sophie?
Yeah, I think we need to, I, I like the way you're, you're framing it, Allison. I think we need to approach this strategically and align this with the priorities that we're gonna set for the board. Um, and have less of a tactical approach maybe that we've used in the past with the committees and more of a strategic one. And really focus on what it is we wanna accomplish with this board for the next, you know, two, three years and what support we're gonna need. So. Um, yeah, I, I would support an, an approach like that.
Any other comments? Mark?
I, I come from committees. I was on, uh, two or three committees before I joined the select board. And I come from a different perspective. I look at the amount of people that in this town that are willing to commit time. And volunteer for committees and I, I recognize that, um, and, and my experience in those committees. That some of great ideas came from them and I'm always looking forward to understanding that, you know. I'm not the smartest guy in the room and I'm not gonna come up with all the great ideas, but I'm always trying to listen for the great ideas when they come up. I like having committees. I like giving them the ability to discuss and come up with ideas. Uh, because I've seen some really good things in this town happen that started with the committees, not us assigning tasks to the committees. I'm, was not in favor of, uh, I understand there are two reasons that I think. Um, Audra came to us, um, and asked us to, to put, put some, some stops to the committees because. They were reaching out to staff members and they really shouldn't. Um, they were sort of overstepping their bounds and instead of. Bringing that into perspective, I think we sort of, you know, maybe threw out the baby with the bathwater. Um, one of the things that's really important and I think Matt and Sophie, you probably, uh, picked this up in your Monday discussion with Audra is that. She is the manager of the town employees and we ourselves, um, should not reach out to town employees to ask anything to get done. We go through Audra. That's the way it works. That's the proper perspective. The committee should never be reaching out to town employees. To get information, to say, we need this, we need that, we'd like you to do this. It's not proper. But I still would like to see, and that's something we need to fix, but I would still like to see that creativity and engaging people. In helping their town, um, without too many controls so that we hear what they have to say. It's, it's a way for, it's sort of like having, uh, the senate versus the house. You know, we are this, we are the senate, we are the six people. Uh, elected to do everything, but then we have forty, fifty, sixty people out there representing little parts of town and we can pick up from them. And I think that's important. So that's sort of my take on it. I think we need to put some controls on it. But I don't think we wanna put too many controls on it and be too overbearing on what we have people discuss.
Matt, do you have any input?
I would say, uh, it's finding the, the middle ground. We are, uh, we're, we're committee heavy, but I agree with Mark's point in terms of, uh, community involvement.
Allison, you wanna point out a comment?
Um, yeah, and I'm, I, I'm, I also come from committees. I've been on. Many of them and that's what got me here, but I also think that the model for involvement in town government has been. Far too focused on committees. People that wanna get involved in something are often directed to a, a. Committee and many of them do not want to participate in that way. They resent having to be. Approved by the select board, have to have minutes all the time. Um, there are many people that can contribute. Amazing ideas and do contribute amazing ideas, um, all the time. They're all free to stop, you know, I think we all get stopped in the grocery store. We have emails that are written to us, um, and that it's our job as select board members to be. Evaluating the ideas that come from all sections of our community and. Um, and then when things rise to the level of, you know, wow, this is something that deserves some town resources or a next step, then we bring that. To the board and I think it's been too focused on, um, committees as, you know, formal town committees as the only pathway to that. And that in a lot of cases, a much better avenue to get things done is, you know, just loosely organized groups or nonprofit organizations. Um, you know, the Rotary Club would not be more effective as a town committee. Um, it would be less effective and so I just think we should be open minded about the model.
I agree. I'm more in tune with, uh, Sophie and Allison. I think that, um, and I think the three, I think that is very clear to me. Um, the, it, Mark's points are all well taken, that these people love doing what they do and that's good. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just that the model, I have, can't tell you how many times people from committees have come and said, we did all this work on this item and we brought to the select board and the select board. Said, uh, what? Um, and rejected it and they said, that's frustrating. Well, it's frustrating because they're working on things that aren't our priorities. And, and we, we have, we have a bandwidth also, as does Audrey's staff. So given that, uh, three of us are in alignment, I, minimum three and a half, four and a half. Um, we'll, we'll scheduling some many, um, strategy versus tactical things with certain limited committees as we go forward. We're not gonna schedule tonight, but we'll get into that next month and scheduling some. Thank you all. Thanks for your input. We'll pro con and in between. Uh, last time on the discussion, um, kind of an exciting one, actually. Audrey is the addition, the potential addition of the, let me get this right, uh, Captain Franks. Swift, 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 gay sailor. It's actually a beautiful, beautiful ship, um, that, uh, Ray Williamson is, uh. Sent a letter to us thinking about, uh, I guess, in a sense, trading out what it was in, windjammer, is that correct, Audrey?
Yes, that's correct. So, um, yeah, I, I think that, um. Ray would like to do this on a permanent basis, but he hasn't sold the mistress yet. And there's a provision in our ordinance where, um, you know, if, if somebody with a windjammer birthing slip. Pays a fee, they can swap, um, other vessels into the birthing slip. So I would, I would just say that. It's really not necessary until the mistress is sold and there's some sort of final decision that you all need to make on that particular birthing slip. Um, I would just recommend that you don't really take any action and at this stage, it's just sort of an FYI that. We're going to see a different vessel on that particular birthing slip, um, from time to time over the summer.
Quite a different vessel, it's quite huge, and quite, it's, it's, it's sort of the caliber of Grace Bailey or the other ones that are, they're really good shit. Um, so basically, so basically license change will occur at some point in time, because we only have six licenses.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't wanna presume that because who knows what's going to happen with the mistress and, and what sort of request is gonna be made by.
Okay.
Um, what, whoever the.
Okay.
Future owner is. So anyway, I just, yeah, I, I just wanna say that's all still very much up in the air. So there, you know, I, I think. Some sort of formal decision will need to be made by the select board at some point in the future when the mistress is sold, but I think until that point. Um, it's more of just an FYI that you're gonna see a, a different windjammer in Cam- or another windjammer in Camden Harbor.
Allison?
I'm really confused. Um, and I thought I understood this, um. Why, what are you saying? So we, there's one license and you're telling us that it. They're gonna be, where's the mistress gonna go? If there's a new boat that's coming in, but the mistress.
Out on a mooring.
What you, what I hear is saying, Allison, is there'll be only one of the two vessels, you know, this summer, that will be at the. Landing for the license. They'll be switching back and forth, cuz I presume Ray must have some charters already written for the mistress he has to fulfill. This summer and the, the other boat now won't be, there's no place to put it in the harbor, so it'll be out on a moor in some place. Uh, if it's, if it's not being brought in for a loading for, uh, a multi-night cruise, which they do, obviously.
And this is something that's allowed?
Yes.
Already. To use the license, to use a different boat. For the license.
Yeah, they, they have to pay a fee and. Fill out an application, but after he's, and he did that, so he can swap another boat into that birthing slip.
Okay, and you're bringing it, it's being brought to the select board because.
Just because it's a large vessel and it's different and just wanted to give you a heads up if anyone went down and saw it.
Yep.
And also, uh, you know, to give you a heads up that this, this might be something that you need to make a decision on depending on.
There may be, may be a license changed for the name of the boat, which is currently on the license as mistress. Then may, if he sells mistress, then there's gonna have to be a decision of what that license is for.
Hmm, I thought it was the actress.
Mistress.
No, actually, it's the actress, right? So it's the, so I, I just wanted to say, I really commend the, you know, the captain for the names of his boats, the actress and the mistress, I think. And I think it's the actress who's gonna become the Jonathan Swift. Anyway, that's what I read in the, in the license, but my only point is, I don't wanna do anything that, that would give him an advantage compared to other windjammers. That's the only thing.
Yeah, right.
Once, and that, that would be my only question when this comes to us for, for decision.
That's correct. There can't be any, any change. Um, but he, he's paying X thousand dollars for the use of the dock for currently the mistress. And what I'm hearing is he's gonna, he's paying a fee to swap one boat for the other on occasion because of the. While he's in the process of selling mistress, I mean, if he sells mistress, then it has to come back to us or redoing his license. Which is currently the mistress. But there are only six licenses of windjammers to my knowledge, is that correct?
Yes.
And seven day sailors.
Correct. We just don't wanna presume that, I mean, it could very well be somebody who wants to operate the mistress out of Camden Harbor. And, and so I guess that's why. And, and who purchases that boat, knowing that they have a birthing slip out of Camden Harbor. So that's kind of why. I don't think any decision should be made until that boat is sold and.
That's perfect.
Oh, that makes, that makes, now I get it.
Well, the boat could be sold, but not with its birthing.
Yeah, that. That's like selling a restaurant without the kitchen. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's probably not the best thing in the world to buy. Okay. Uh, thanks a lot, Audrey, for that. It's quite an exciting boat. With that, we will, um, move over to, um. Audrey, we didn't put on the listing facility, uh, facility manager, uh, town manager. Of course, do you have anything you wanted to report before we close tonight?
Um, I would, yes, there, there are a couple of things. I'll, I'll be, I, I'll be.
No, Audrey, I'm just kidding you, go ahead.
So, um, with the, the downtown drainage and pedestrian improvements. Um, they're planning to pour the concrete for the sidewalks tomorrow. Um, and the goal is for them to be completed with that project by the twenty-fifth. Um, so there's, there's a number of things.
Can, can we do handprints in the concrete?
If you show up early enough, Bob. So, the sidewalks were scheduled to be poured tomorrow, um. We received, or not we, but MDOT received bids for the, uh, Washington Street sidewalk from Matthew John Ave to Shertail Point. And I'm happy to report that, um, it's within, it's, it's way exceeded the contract that we have with MDOT. But because of everybody's lack of, lack of faith that, um, construction costs were gonna be reasonable. It fits within the amount that we have budgeted for that project. So, um, thank you. Thank you, budget committee members that are listening, because the, the budget committee was. Very supportive and understanding and willing to be flexible when it, when it came time to discuss that project. So, um. So happy to say that that's going to be able to go forward. And another project that I'm, I'm also to happy to report is gonna go forward is the. Quarry Hill to Maritime Farms Route One South Sidewalk Project. So. That came in within the, um, contract price that the town has with MDOT. Um, because that hadn't been looked at for a few years, it is still. I think about twenty thousand over the amount that we currently have in the reserve account and also, um, some money had been paid out. For the engineering and design work with that project, but, um, you know, there's, there's lots of ways we can make up for the cost of that. And given that's a million dollar project and it's been, you know, years and years in, in the planning process, so. Um, I'll, I'll give you options on, you know, how we can fund it, but we do have funds available to make up for that difference and.
Sophie had a question of your own.
I have a quick question on this project. Are, are we, are, will the sidewalks be wide enough so that people with scooters can navigate them without having to bump into the. Telephone poles? It's, it's an issue that's been brought up to me when I was campaigning and I'm just dutyfully bringing it back.
Yes, that is, that is certainly the goal. It's, um, it's quite a, uh, it's quite a sidewalk. Um. So, yeah, those are, I'm, I'm just very, very happy because there's a lot of people who worked for many, many, many years on these projects. And they're all gonna move forward. I'm still, you know, waiting to hear from MDOT who the contracts were awarded to and when the, um. Schedule, yeah, the, the date for construction is scheduled to.
Thanks, Audrey. Allison, quick question?
No, it's gonna be a really long one, Bob, just for you, um. Um, so tomorrow, if the sidewalks are gonna be, the concrete is gonna be poured, are we leaving spaces for some trees in a couple of locations that have been discussed?
Yes, so that'll be part of the pour is the, uh, the tree wells.
Yeah, if you look at right now, Allison, at the corner of, um, for the new, uh, baby clothing stores, there's, there's a, there's a cutout. And the cutout is where the concrete won't go and the tree will go.
Okay, great. And what if, and on the, um, Chestnut Street bump out too?
Yes, there will be a tree well there as, as well.
Great. And do we need to do any tree advocacy, um, for the new sidewalk? Projects. I know that oftentimes DOT says, you just tell us where the trees can, you want trees and we'll leave, we won't pay for them. But we'll leave, um, tree wells. Can we? Like, I, I, I maybe it's too early to say that, but I would just like to voice my support for using money to put in trees. If the anti-tree people in the last round were able to get them out of the design or something, I don't know. If there are opportunities for trees, let's pursue them.
I think there'll be some property owners that would be really happy.
Yep.
Um, you know, we can, cuz, oh, you know, a lot of it is so close to the, um, the edge of the right of way that, um. You know, it would, even if they, um, it would, they would all be on private property. They wouldn't necessarily be in the right of way, but I think that. You know, there's a bunch of property owners that, um, would be very happy to work with the town on that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's exciting news. Audrey finally has some bids that came in, those projects, get them done. And we'll update us when you hear the schedules, please.
Will do.
To select board reports, who wants to start off between Mark or Allison? Mark raises his hand first.
I'll, I'll start to, so I can scare Matt and Sophie about, you know, what my reports usually are like, um. A couple of things, uh, the first thing I was gonna bring up, I was gonna ask about the Dave St. Laurent's, uh, promise about mid-June construction being finished. And obviously, things take a little longer. So instead of a question, uh, please pass along, uh, my thanks to him for getting this done. Before the big season starts, because that was a discussion, you know, with DOT years ago to make sure that we, they, their construction stayed out of our prime time downtown. It's be nice to have our downtown all finished. So please thank Dave for that. I had a couple of questions. Um, the, the status, there was, uh, some work done on the skate park. Do you have any updates on skate park, Audrey?
I, I don't have any updates on skate park aside from, um. Aside from the fact that I, you know, recently we've had some, um. People reach out to us who are interested in, uh, large donations.
Oh, that's great.
So I think that, yeah, I think that we're gonna need to, um, make, you know, uh, depending on. make, you know, uh, depending on sort of the scale of these large donations, we're going to have to kind of talk about
Right.
plans for that and and um, you know, what, what you're comfortable doing at that location.
That's terrific. Uh, second question or uh solar, uh, what's the status with what's going on out at uh Owl's Head? Do we know yet?
I have not had an update from anyone on, you know, where they're at with that and how long it's going to take.
Great. And then my last thing, I want to talk about the Opera House for a minute. Um, got a report from Dave Morrison uh to the Opera House Committee uh about what's been going on there. And they've had uh you know, it's the only uh mid-coast venue is, I may be missing this a little bit, that's consistently met their commitment to have arts through this pandemic. And since uh basically every Friday night since uh almost since COVID started, there have been uh shows on Friday night at the Opera House when we can have audience in, they had a limited spaced audience. When they couldn't have audience in, they did, they still had shows broadcast from the Opera House with and with free views and they have been tremendously well accepted. Uh, lots of views, uh, the shows, I think we had nineteen shows through uh uh through this, through June right now. And there'll be one, uh, there are Friday night shows uh continuing through September now. Um, and also we're starting to see some big uh as things open up. Uh, are usually we have a big show around uh Windjammer Days and Labor Day Weekend and Tom Rush, uh, the folk singer will be our headliner this year at at Windjammer Days. And tickets are already on sale there and selling really well, according to Dave. One of the things about the uh, the Sound Check Series, which is our Friday night shows, we've had tremendous support from some of our uh inns. We've had seven different inns, uh, Norm Bega, Mainstay, Lord Camden and Hawthorne in the Elms, uh Blue Harbor and Captain Swift that have all contributed uh to uh contributed to the the shows on Friday nights. Um, so I'd like to thank them for helping and also W E R U has been a big supporter. And then lastly, there will be two free concerts at this, at the Snowball this summer. Uh, on August eighth, the Jason Spooner Band with an opening act will be there. And on August twenty second, uh Primo Cubano will be uh there and they're both supported and paid for by the Community Arts Fund. That has been the, the, it's been the um uh fund that's been supporting these shows and it's been uh uh donations that have done it. And right now uh, it's got a thirteen thousand dollar um fund right now, which has been mostly through donations and support uh and ticket sales. So it's been a really successful year for people trying to, you know, help people in the midst of this pandemic and starting to open up a lot. So like to thank Dave and the staff at the Opera House because they've worked really hard to contribute to the town.
Thank you, Mark. Allison.
Um, yeah, real quick here, I'm going to just share my screen quickly. Um, the exciting developments um this week is that the Watershed School um has put up their murals, the two different projects that they did relating to climate change. My screen is going all crazy and purple. Do you guys see that?
It's all crazy and purple.
Wow, that's not a good sign.
I think you have a virus.
Uh, no, I think I'm just maxing out my hardware. Um, here we go. You can see that that one of the murals was on the public landing um bathrooms. And then the other one um that they have done is on the Harbor Master Shack marking um uh sea level rise scenarios by twenty one hundred. And um I think this is a great example of something that was not done by a town committee, but that, you know, is something we've talked about for years and years. Oh, wouldn't it be great if we marked on the on, you know, on somewhere down at the public landing where the sea level right, where sea level rise is going to be. And everybody always comes up with these ideas and doesn't actually end up getting it done. And the school this year just did an awesome job of um, you know, putting the pieces together and making it work. So check out um the murals. They also did a a website about habitat and um climate change and the address for that website is on the um mural on the public bathrooms. So thank you to the Watershed School.
Thank you. Cool. Well, to our newcomers, I welcome you to sing a song or if you'd like to just, you know, talk about how happy you are to be here. Not uh now that, now that you've been, you actually, tonight you performed it like you've been on the board for a week. Uh, that's very well done. You did a great job and it's not always easy, but you're you're sliding in very well. Well, you miss our former friends. We welcome our new friends. Sophie, Matt, I give you opportunity to say anything you'd like to say at this point.
I, so there's one, there's, there's one thing I I'd like to share because I think it's a really cool initiative. While uh some pet lovers are fearful of uh fireworks and and I'm not opening a debate on the fireworks and dogs uh issue, there's a really cool initiative that encourages people instead of buying fireworks for the Fourth of July to buy two bags of pet food and to give to shelters in the area to support our four-legged friends. So I salute this uh initiative, I think.
Thank you, Sophie.
And I'm delighted to be here.
But I have to state that fireworks are illegal in Camden, just for the record. Uh, or probably, I don't, but you already know that. Matthew, how about you? Oh, yes, I'll take some.
Um, so, yeah, I think it's just time to uh just relate that spring is here. Oops, no, spring is already gone. Um, that happened in about one day. And summer is upon us. So um, it's been lovely for all of us that live here to appreciate um all the good things that have come to us. Um, those are the strawberries from my backyard, so a great start. And then anecdotally, I just want to tell the one quick sweet story to close the night. Um, walking out with Kona and Sophie knows my dog Kona. Um, just walking and the children are out playing in the streets. So Allison is like some strange, you know, live Norman Rockwell. And the cutest thing happened, Allison, when I was walking with Kona, they always come up and say hi. And two of them came up and they just stood there. And they, and they just stood there and I was like, okay, what's going on here? And the little one said to me, do you see, do you see, do you see? And Mark, I was very confused. And he smiled and he said, this is what it looks like to have a smile. And so it was just so sweet that, you know, in this time when we're going through the pandemic, um, how it impacts the children and how positive they are to get back to their lives.
So well spoken, Matt, well, well spoken as we transition hopefully, hopefully for error into a somewhat different, but back to normal, see whatever that is. Uh, that's great, great. It is so much fun to see. Somebody said to me too, he said, it's nice to see you smile again because they couldn't see below the mask. But with that and with a great evening done, Mark, would you take Duke Yard?
Uh, I would like to uh and somewhat sadly uh ask to return, I make a motion to adjourn the select board because it's been fun. Welcome, Matt and Sophie. Um, and I look forward to um meeting in person. This will come up sometime soon and I'm looking forward to that. Uh, I miss it and it will, it will be fun with our new members. So I make a motion to adjourn the select board.
Every second, second, but not. Uh, those with favor, roll, 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 Sophie, hi, Allison.
Hi.
Matt, so I and um, I see his eye and Mark, hi. Bob, hi. And I know what Audrey can vote to. Well, thank you very much. Onward and upward. We've got challenges ahead. Uh, and uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll just take them one at a time. As you all know, thank you. Looking forward. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.